All right, good morning to everybody. It is Friday, March the 10th. I'm Mayor Kurt Wilson. I'm here at Rivers Landing with some unbelievable people. I want to introduce my city council colleagues, Peter Vanstrom, Lee Hills, Michael Palermo, Christine Hall, Will Mortland. We're also here joined by Adrian Murchison from the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. Welcome Adrian and Delaney Tarr from the Operator Herald App and Media. Welcome, Delaney. And so this morning is going to be a little different. So one of the things when we came out of the retreat was we set up program dates for the council and for the talent of the city to routinely follow up and be able to do organizational meetings on an ongoing basis so that we can continue to follow up and stay aligned on our pathway and our execution. And that will continue to happen. Today, kind of as an adjunct to that, one of the other things that I'd like to introduce is I'd like to open up a regular, ongoing opportunity for the council and the mayor, any additional people from the city talent organization that could be with us to join us, but I'd like to open up more engaging conversations with the press to have open access to us so that there can be open conversations on an ongoing basis. Obviously with the mayor at any time, let me say that, that I want that, that I'm available at any time, but I want to be able to, for we can open up the conversation between ourselves and the press and our fellow residents. And so outside necessarily just city council meetings because city, mayor and city council meetings are very kind of stately, formal affairs where sometimes it's very hard for the elected body to communicate the ongoing opportunities, plans, and thinking that's going on in the city, among particularly among the leadership of the city. And one of the things I'd like for that is for that to change and the ideal of transparency and the idea of giving people more insight about what's going on, what's some of the thinking is about what's going on. So this is kind of a first step trajectory in trying to do that. One with the press, so welcome Adrian and Delaney. This day is as what's yours as well as any residents that come. As you know, these things are usually packed houses, so I know you don't have a lot of space back there, a lot of room, you're kind of, it's very busy. But before I do though, I want to introduce a couple of people, some of the people behind the scenes that don't get a lot of love. And the first one is, he doesn't know this, come here Officer Kelly. Forgive me for saying that, but this guy works in City Hall and you may have seen this young man before, he just recently had a beautiful little girl, him and his wife. But like, so you guys have probably all heard of Second Amendment people, and Second Amendment people are throughout the country and they come into government organizations and they kind of radically do stuff and they try to scare the local government and often it's usually the staff or the talent in the city, he's like, hey, what are you doing? And they show me all your stuff and some, on somebody's desk and creates all this up for. Well, we had one of those people show up in Roswell and Alpharetta, and usually they're somewhat, I would say, aggressive in their behavior. They're not necessarily always the most gentile because they're always throwing the Constitution at you. And by the way, you're talking to a constitutionalist, so I believe in the Constitution, I know everybody else in this room does, but they're usually waving it in the face, being somewhat antagonistic. And this cat right here, we had this happen recently, not too long ago, and it went viral. Happened in Alpharetta, happened in Roswell the same day. Poor Alpharetta didn't have such a great outcome because they were lucky enough to have this cat leading and having the engagement. And so the level of professionalism that Officer Kelly, I call him Officer Kelly because that's what my wife calls him too. And so he's an amazing professional and did such a great job with this young man from one of the, you know, the constitutionalist, second, I forget the terminology. You did such a great job representing the city of Roswell and opening up the doors and handling it such a professional way. And I don't think most, most of most people will get to know you, but they need to know you. Like you're a great example of how, what great hands our city, our city's hands. So Officer Kelly, I just wanted to say thank you. And I want to let everybody else know that this is who the guy is and is a great example of how well we're represented by our talent in the city of Roswell. So thank you, brother. Appreciate you. All right. The other thing I'm going to do is unfair is I'm going to point, hey Jeff Leatherman, you're on in just a second, wherever you are Jeff. So I want to point the camera, so right now there's a young man named Theodore Lawrence who's pointing to the camera at me and right back there, there's another man who's from Scotland, Ben Frye. And so these guys do all the videos underneath the leadership of Julie Breck of Community Relations. And so they do a fantastic job. And so turn around, come step in the camera, I want everybody to see you.
I'm coming right through the middle.
All right. This has been, and Theodore, I know you can't step off because you got the little headphones on, but you can, but later on I want to get, these guys do a great job for us. So before we get into kind of like a Q and A session, so Adrian, this is yours, you get first tabs based upon, I think, conversation we had earlier. So you get this open, open format with us. And the Delaney, same thing. And then if you guys want to join together and ask any other questions, but I want to give you an opportunity first, kind of based upon the interview process. But Jeff, before we do, would you do me a favor?
Sure.
Would you kind of just take us through, just to do a little bit of follow up, kind of like what we discussed, take us a little bit about where we are in the bonds in relation to Parks and Rec?
Okay. So first and foremost, I think the exciting thing is a couple, been a week ago, Mayor Council authorized what I consider our first bond project, which would be the turf fields at East Roswell. That is in conjunction with an additional $2 million of improvements that you all authorized back in April of the prior budget cycle. Those fields will be constructed here in the spring and be opened up in the summertime. And I think the exciting piece about that is it allows us then to start the domino effect of the other turf fields that need to be replaced. We've got a significant investment that will be happening in all of our parks and facilities. So first project gets out the door and authorized, which is again, very exciting. Right behind that is Mayor Council prioritized the developments and the redevelopments of the River Parks quarter. We are in the schematic design process for Don White Park, schematic design process for Riverside, and schematic design process for Azalea Park. All three of those parks are funded in the bond. The design process will take us through this summer. We'll have those construction documents and efforting to line those up in the fall and early part of the winter, winter of this calendar year so that they're ready for construction as we move through this entire quarter. So the first two parks that will be ready for construction on the river will be Don White and Riverside. And then the third one, Azalea, will lag behind that about six to seven months. So those will be the priority projects that we have under design right now. We're working our way through some of the infrastructure analysis, go back to East Roswell Park, some significant stormwater challenges there where the aging infrastructure just needs to be replaced. So we'll be working on that with at Riverside or at East Roswell. And then we'll be looking at Roswell Area Park Pond as well. That is a bond project that is funded at Roswell Area Park. We'll be working with our stormwater group to rework the design of that pond, look at capacity to accept stormwater. The outfall drainage system underneath the dam area will also need to be replaced and that is a project that is getting ready to go through the design process. So we've got a handful of projects that we're lining up. Again, as this Mayor Council has talked about on numerous occasions, we're looking at what are the, the infrastructure issues that we have, failing infrastructure, starting there and working our way essentially from underground up at different areas of our parks and facilities.
Question. By the way, sorry, I didn't introduce this gentleman. I know everybody in the room knows, but everybody's watching this, may not know. This is Director Jeff Leatherman, who's the Director of Parks and Recs, Historical Assets and Cultural Affairs for the city of Roswell.
Could you elaborate a little bit about what the schematic, what schematic process is?
Sure.
And how long that process will take?
Yep.
And if construction, playground is the next step and how long that will take?
Yeah. So we go through schematic, concept schematic and then construction drawings, and that is all of the design process. What we want to be on our side is we want to make sure that before we get into the construction drawings of any new park improvements, we use the schematic process, which is essentially the outline of what the park improvements look like. So this gives you what is the building, size of the structure, what does the playground start to look like, what does the parking lot layout look like so that we can get feedback from the community and from the council before we spend a lot of time and effort designing those improvements. What that does is it allows us to speed the process up, get feedback before we spend a lot of money in the construction process and then allows us to efficiently and effectively deliver that project. So schematic goes first and then the construction drawings. Schematic can take anywhere from three to six months depending on the complication of the project and then construction drawings take anywhere from another six months. If it's a really complicated project, up to 12 months of actual design work before you're ready to bid or to build a park infrastructure. So that whole process, we estimate anywhere from nine to 12 months to get through that designing process so that then we're ready with a set of construction drawings to let the contract. The biggest challenge that we have down here on the river is the regulatory environment that we work at. National Park has to sign off, Army Corps of Engineers has to sign off, Georgia State and our stream buffer variance projects have to sign off on all those projects. So while the design process can be in that nine to 12 months, we're also beholden to the permitting process, which could delay and change that timing depending on how fast we're seeing responses back in the regulatory environment. I'll just give you an example. ASAN Phase One, the permitting process took 12 months just to get through all the different permits regardless of how fast we were working on the design side. Yeah.
Christine, do you want to kind of elucidate anything else in reference to timeline, just to kind of serve everybody's knowledge?
So I was just, I'm trying to identify, we're going to put the first shovel in the ground in approximately what quarter and what year?
So first shovel in the ground for Riverside and Don White would be right after the first of the year in 2024. That was the article.
This may not be the real house, but travel test.
Sure.
Bond projects, how would, how would bond projects go with the phasing of the bonds that could be a feature?
You mean the actual financing of how we're.
Sort of putting together the projects and as each project goes along, pushing bonds out.
Right.
Where they're at timing, can you touch on that as an example?
Yeah, there'd be more of my question on kind of how we're dealing with the financing associated with the different projects. What we'll do is we'll line up, I think the council members' hall's point is we line up all of the projects that we have and what sequence we think we can deliver, right? And then takes that analysis with bond council and starts to look at what kind of bond sales do they need to do to accommodate parks and then separate from that public safety and then obviously the parking deck and itself.
That's, that's the question.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping you're going to ask this question, we all kind of like, so the, the Roswell residents voted on 107.6 million dollars of bond projects, right?
Yes.
And so the real question that most residents have is, hey, when do I get to see, when do I get to see the result of that?
Yeah.
How would you answer that, Jeff?
I would answer that, that you're going to start to see the results of that in series starting this spring. The first one being the fields that we're doing out in East Roswell. So from our perspective, we have a lot of complicated projects, kind of, I'll put them on this side of my ledger. The river is a very complicated series of projects because we're working in a highly regulatory, regulated, prime of the parts of law and permits. It's very complicated because we're dealing with five, six, seven, and 10 million dollars worth of improvements. Those will be on their own path and their own schedule getting through the design and permitting process. And on the other side of the ledger, I start to think about synthetic turf replacement, LED light retrofit fits, stormwater improvements. Those are projects that as a team within the city of Roswell, we have the capacity to move relatively quickly with our boats, but we can do those within house talent. We can also do those with our partners in stormwater and the transportation. And so we'll be running those on our own critical path and delivering those on a different schedule, which we can do a lot quicker because it doesn't require the same type of permitting or design work necessary to deliver those projects. And so as I think about, and I keep coming back to our synthetic fields and LED lights, a lot of cases, we have brand new light poles that are concrete poles, but we have 25 row fixtures. It's just a matter of replacing the fixtures and we can transform a field from the current non-LED system into our LED system. And those are projects that we can do in-house. We're actually in the process right now of getting pricing for all of the lights in East Roswell Park. That would be considered a bond funding project. So we'll be running different strategies as it relates to project delivery so that our residents start to see improvements on, looking for it on one side, they'll start to see those coming into the spring and summer. And we will on, we'll be in ongoing iterative process to deliver those projects and then they'll start to see some more complicated projects in the next 12, excuse me, 12 to 18 months.
Do you want to share the story you shared with the recognition last night about the scene?
Sure. You know, I think that this council spent a lot of time speaking with the community about why the laws are so important. We had a lot of conversations about deferred maintenance, maintenance that has not been invested in, in our community. Friday, excuse me, earlier this week on Tuesday, we had a staff member going to the restroom to East Roswell Park. They were in there at about 3:00, came back a half hour later and portions of the scene would have just fallen down. And literally it's just run its useful life, the drywall separated from beams and fell out of the floor. And it just speaks to where we are with some of the aging infrastructure and why the bonds are so important. Those facilities and those infrastructures, they're not, I think the council member Hills and I talked about, it's not sexy stuff, right? Replacing and repairing a bathroom is not exciting, but so necessary for our community. And these are restrooms that were built in the 90s and they've just run the course. And so it's time to get in there, replace, repair them, and it's just another kind of real world example of why bonds for us and for apartment for our community are so important that we don't have to have as a department, we don't have to have this opportunity cost of bait of, okay, now we've got to, we've got to stop a less important project to fix this emergency, but have the resources that we can go fix this problem that has arisen that we knew, you know, we've got to do this aging infrastructure, this one's come up. Now we've got the resources to attack that problem, not just put a mandate on it and fix it permanently for the next 30 years.
Any thoughts or questions for Jeff before we let him go? Because I think he's leaving us shortly, right? Director Leatherman? Anybody else got any thoughts or questions? Adrian or Delaney, before Jeff leaves, any questions for Jeff?
Is there a different investment for each park or can you share?
Yeah. It's been a while since I've gone through my bond spiel, so, but if you do go onto our website, the list is there. So just give you some that I know right off the top of my head. East Roswell is a good example, just over $8 million is estimated for improvements in East Roswell. And we've gone through a series of evaluation on our five-year park master plan to evaluate the aging infrastructure and what needs to be replaced and repaired and then assign approximate values to those parks. Every park is roughly $10 million. We have some strategies built into the bonds for also trail connectivity and trail improvement. Those have pricing estimates associated with them. And there is a summary sheet that's listed on the website that you can get those kind of finite details. Each park has its own kind of projects. Roswell Area Park, as I mentioned earlier, we've got a detention pond there that has some aging infrastructure that we need to deal with sooner rather than later. So we'll start to prioritize those types of projects first, complicated, so we can make sure that we deal with opportunities for improvements so they don't become an emergency.
And you're also still, even though the bond projects were very public and very repotably voted on, inside of those are some of the manifestations of the things where you still need decisions from the elected body. For example, how old is the bike and pedestrian master plan? It's 2019-ish?
2019-ish.
And if you took out that entire set of projects, I believe it was $180 million alone, just standing on its loan. And so we've done several workshops with underneath Peter's leadership on economic development. And you say, why am I bringing that up? Well, because it's directly related to the bike and pedestrian master plan, which is directly related to a lot of what Jeff is doing and that there has to be clarity from the council, from the elected body on what is, what components of the bike and pedestrian path plan are we going to put into the city as a component of the bond projects, which we allotted about $20 million in the public bond asking. And that, that's not just underneath the Park and Recs Department, which you're leading that as well. And it's interesting, out of one of the workshops, one of the economic development workshops, Jeff and one of the vendors, in my estimation, came up with the best plan I have seen ever in the history of this city on an iteration of the bike and pedestrian plan. But the reality is it's waiting for the leadership to say, okay, we're going to do that, we're going to do that. Sounds simple, but you have to make sure that it's in coherence with your economic development plan, which is still being worked on. There's still pieces of the economic development plan because that's very complicated. And I think one of the things that we're trying to do as, as a leader, as a leadership of the city is not jump on the first, but make sure that we put all the pieces together so that it has a 20-year outlook, not a three-year outlook. And it's very easy to say from a political perspective, let's go do that, oh, that's a win, look at what we did. And I think everyone's trying to be intentional and much more deliberate about the process. And I say that is because I can't wait to do, I can't wait. I don't know if we've put the bike and pedestrian master plan, plan that you came up with, with the vendor. I don't know, Peter, if that's gone public.
It's up the loop.
It's the loop and it should because I think if our residents, fellow residents saw that, I think they'd be like wildly excited. But you're probably saying, well, why haven't you put that out there? Why have you done it? Well, because there's economic development pieces that have to be tied together before we commit to spend $20 million of the taxpayers' money, right? So we don't want to make the mistake, we pay, start off on a path, start it going, something from the other side changes the equation, uh-oh, we got the egg on our face, spent money, then you end up justifying something that didn't turn out to be the best long-term project to do. But so many pieces to this equation, it's not even funny, and try and pack that all in and make it coherent is part of our job and, and to be transparent about all of it as well at the same time.
Yeah, that's the hard work. When you really, as you start to look at, you know, okay, you talk, I think very easily about synthetic fields, that's an easy, good decision. We're replacing light for light, we go in, we fix the infrastructure, we start talking about economic development and land and connectivity in our community. As you described, you're talking about 20, 30-year decisions that you want to make sure that you get right and push those initiatives forward and then accelerate it.
Well, it's funny, like, you know, Roswell being 175-year-old city, one of the great historic cities in our state, but the synthetic field discussion didn't become so easy.
Right.
It became very amplified and very polarizing.
Sure.
Right? It wasn't, we thought it was an easy decision, right?
Right.
From a practical perspective, but it did turn out to be an easy decision, right? It became a very polarized decision. Like it was like hardly fought in the trenches, behind the scenes. So it's funny, like there are no easy decisions, right? When you're in the political role.
Fair.
All right, I know you got to go. Anything, anybody else, any questions or thoughts for Jeff?
I do have one other question about Lita Thompson Park. Is that a part of, is that one of the parks that's going to get some investment from the bond? There was some conversation, I guess maybe last year, about having an artist residence at one of the residential parks.
Sure.
As they become open and are the other, the housing there, is that under the power of the permit?
So first question, bond, the Lita Thompson Park itself is not included in the bond. This Mayor Council however did, in our current year budget, authorize three new maintenance positions specifically targeted at trail maintenance. When you look at our five-year park master plans from really the last probably 15 years, trails almost always ranks either the first and most important improvement element in our community or number two, for sure, top three. And this Mayor Council recognized that that investment in the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of trails is highly important. So that team is up and running, resource well within the community and they're charged with the maintenance of those trails, which not only the trails there, but also the trails here at the river, the trails in Riverside Park and Big Creek. We've got about 30 miles of trails that they are charged with. With regards to the artist residence, we do have an artist residence program that is there for Lita Thompson that supports our clay and blacksmithing programs. And so that, that position has been filled and is unoccupied, is occupied and does live in one of those apartments as part of that program. We have a couple of vacancies that were, are still in those apartments. They do fall under the charge of the Department for Maintenance of those apartment complexes. And then we're working on future policies for how we continue to manage those into the future.
So the simple answer on Lita would be working today. How would you describe the simple answer?
Not in the bond, working on what do we do with those apartments into the future.
It's a, the management, from my perspective, from what I have learned in the last 15 months, is the management is very difficult. So you have a department that's managing apartments, right? Extensively?
Yeah.
It's not set up to do it. It's, it's been, and it's like a lot of things in the city, it was like a little silo created, nobody really had clarity on it. Go do this, you know, the power of the city, elected leadership, somebody says, go do this, somebody says, go do that. And then the city's kind of stuck with like a problem it doesn't know how to manage. Like where did that come from? How did that happen? What do we do with it? Well, it's your problem, you get to manage it. Do you have any solutions? I don't, I don't have, and I don't have the requisite authority to deal with it, right? Well, what do you want me to do with it long-term? Is that something really, do we want to be in the business of housing at Lita Thompson? Like forever and ever and ever? Does that something that the city wants to be in? And my answer to that is, I say, my answer would be, Adrian, don't displace, take care of the people who are there. But if you didn't have an intentional plan about it in the first place, it was an unintentional happening, right? Then why are you doing it ongoing if you're not set up resource-wise to do that? Like that's, if you're not in the business to do that, why are you doing that? And there's a lot of lack of clarity behind that particular issue. A lot, it's very noisy, make no mistake about it, it's very noisy behind the scenes and people have very strong opinions. But from a practical matter, he's managing that. So you have the Parks and Recs Department managing housing, right?
Yeah.
This is not the most logical thing I've ever heard in my life, to me. I mean, I just like, he's not set up to do that. And it's hard.
It is, it's hard.
And so the direction from our perspective, Adrian, is keep taking care of the people who are there, right? But let's figure out a long-term plan. And I don't think we figured out what the long-term plan is frankly for Lita Thompson Park in terms of housing. The only direction we can get is you got, you got it, take care of the people who are there, let's improve the situation, let's make it better. But how do we get into this? Like is this logical long-term? That's the question I would ask. Is there anything else you want to add to that? Because I'm trying to think, it's been a while since we talked about Lita, it's not cold in my head.
Yeah, that's fair.
I can tell you, I remember that there was previously for somehow a city administrator that was living there, which I just, we like, how did that happen? Like it's not meant for, it's not, wasn't meant that intent and that was obviously very noisy and incorrect. All right, I know you got to go.
The worst. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now that he said it three times, you got to go.
Yeah.
Michael's lowly at this table. Come up here and sit here because this is a conversation between us, so feel free, unless you want to sit in the back or you can sit in the front, but feel free to come up here.
But just a warning, he didn't make it home last night. That's when he was at the party.
That's not, so. We usually isolate Michael. And Sarah is not here. Sarah is the mother of young children and I think she has some complications this morning that she, Jamie?
Maybe 10 o'clock, she's going to drive to here by 10.
So, and just FYI, I'll just go ahead and announce this publicly. So Sarah being the youngest of us and the most talented from a communications platform, and I can't take credit for this idea, and unless the person who wants to take credit for that idea speaks up, I won't put that on this person. One of the people on the council said, hey, Sarah's a lot better at communication. Help use Sarah's abilities and talents. So you're going to see communication come out from the city today on the retreat. We're going to see a formal stated position in the retreat and that's going to be from the mayor and council. And I've asked Sarah to say, hey, you're going to write this stuff from our perspective because you're a lot better than the rest of us. It makes more sense and you're much more.
Social media sound?
Yes, thank you. All right. So the floor is yours, Adrian.
Well, I do have another question, but I want to give you an opportunity.
Oh, guys don't be nice to each other.
Well, I wanted to ask about Gateway. Earlier this week I was curious because on G-DAT's website, it was showing 2028.
Yes.
And started construction in a lower cost, which I think like $30 million cost instead of 50. But they have said that their website is wrong, so that was my initial reason for getting in touch to, before they came back and said that it was wrong. But I still would like to know what your understanding is of the status right now and is there going to be any change with some of the property that's being acquired? You know, I know there's been a lot of resistance, obviously from business owners.
There is. So let me give you my thoughts on Gateway. Gateway and so. Gateway, and so Lee, Mike, really, all the council can probably speak to it in a much more informed manner than me. Gateway was conceived in 1998. That plan goes all the way back to 1998. The city Roswell formally submitted a plan to the state of Georgia in 2010, 2012. Forget, 2012. So the state of Georgia, its transportation departments, had a plan in their hands from us for 11 years. And I can't, there's so many pieces of elevation and discussion that gone back and forth. But one of the things that struck me when Jeff was talking about the problems with the river, like getting a project done. So Gateway is kind of, that's kind of like the state's perspective, it's like, hey, guys, you gave us a plan, then we went about the plan, and so, do you know, this is, do you know how hard it is to get permitting and easements on property from the National Park Service? Like, they're wore out, like GDOT is, the state is, like, they're wore out. And then they hear from us, like, well, wait a minute, we want you to do this, we want you to do that. Oh, wait a minute, hasn't been public enough? I don't know. I do know that there will be a formal process of making this public through an EPA meeting after the, I think, the next iteration. It is highly controversial, this whole Gateway project. And, but one of the things that I learned, Adrian, when we first got into this, was this thing was well down the path. Like, we came in, it's like, hey, can we, can we change this? Can we amend this? Can we do something about this? Help! Help! And the state said, hey, guys, we're following your plan. And this plan's been in place for a long term, and we've been working on permitting and easements for a long time. We can't unpack that, we can't undo that. And so then I got a lot of residents are like, really angry, we don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want this. And a lot of residents saying, we want this, we want this. I mean, that's literally what's going on, and it's very noisy. I don't know, and everybody weigh in, because we haven't, we haven't, as an elected body, said, oh, this is what our position is. It's already in play. We created the Roswell Transportation Advisory Commission. That body was very vocal against the project. I understand it. Most of those people informed me of my thinking about transportation as a resident coming into this as an elected leader, then getting into as elected leader, getting other information and saying, oh my gosh, there's more to this. But I still got a lot of my friends are saying, no, 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 we gotta do this, we gotta do this. And then getting into the practical world and saying, but we can't, we don't have the authority to do that. So I say to you is that we are trying to work with the state in a complimentary way saying, are there some things that we can change, understanding that this project is gonna happen? If you ask me today, I'd probably say 2028, it may be 2026. I don't have clarity on that myself. We'll be going down to see the state again shortly, within a couple of weeks, to follow up on it and say, where are we on this? We have some subtle proposals to them about some things that we would like to amend. But for them, for example, like we said, can we make the roads not quite as wide? And they can say, look, we can't because of permitting. We can't undo the permitting and the easements. We can't do that. That's them. But like Councilmember Blumberg came up with a clever idea, said, can we make the medians wider? Can we make those lanes a little less quiet through the medians? They're considering that, right? But we have to get, even though it's our project, they have to approve and say, yes. Really, they have the authority to do that. We've asked them, like, can, can we put in more traffic calming measures? Because for me, Adrian, it's not just about the Gateway project, and I haven't, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to say this to our residents in Arte, it's also about Highway Nine. Because right now, I can tell you, and I can't make public some of the things that we're working on from a development side. Because we're thinking about development 20 years from now, and we're thinking like, we think, we really believe that City of Roswell should be 120,000 people. Some people think that's crazy, that we're gonna be 200,000 people. Well, I think we're gonna be 120. But if I believe that, that means I have to be very, so very intentional about what my development looks like. So if I bring in, so for example, mixed-use high-density development, we need to placemake it. We need to know where it's going, the timing it's going in. And you say, what does that have to do with Gateway and Highway Nine? For me, it has everything to do. Because like Alpharetta did a very nice job on Highway Nine in its downtown. It wasn't very complicated. The state had to be involved in that. We've never, in my opinion, had any success with the state being involved in a complimentary way ahead of time. And so we had a conversation recently with the state saying, there's a formal process for developers to go through the transportation process, but it's often disconnected. So I said, how do we get better at being involved in a communication process so you know what we're thinking, and we get your go-ahead and green light, or you say to us, hey, that's not gonna work? Because these are state roads we're talking about. And often, you know, I can tell you as a resident, they go, why can't we do something with it? Doesn't belong to us, right? It belongs to the state. So I don't know if I answered your question about Gateway, and I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything better than what I said. And if I didn't answer your question, come back at me. So I apologize if I didn't.
Yeah. Well, one, you know, you're saying that it can't be, as far as the acquisitions or easements, that can't be undone.
It can.
Okay. And...
And those aren't us, by the way. That's the state.
Right. Right, right, right. Okay, I guess that's it.
Well, and the reason I say that is, this is what, how the state's informed me, and Mike, you can, or Lee, you can address this probably better again. Those have been 10, 15 years in the making. Right? And if you've ever dealt with the NPS, National Park Service, you realize, like, you do not wave the wand and say, hey, by the way, I need an easement today. Like, that is a long, long process. So I think a lot of people are thinking, well, we can just blow up Gateway. Just blow it up. Not gonna happen. Like, hey, it's not, we're gonna say, state, don't do the project. In their minds, City Roswell and the state of Georgia have been working on this since 1998. Yes, sir, Peter?
Yeah, I'd like to add, just to, just to make sure that this is really clear, in 2012 roughly?
2012.
That, the council approved the plans that the city designed. And I think that's really important to understand, and I don't think I had a full grasp of that when I, when I took over office. It's things we learn as we go through and experience being council members. That, that design was created by the city itself. And there's, I just want to correct a rumor that keeps flaring up that that's GDOT's proposal, the actual design that led to the land acquisition.
It's not GDOT's, it's Roswell's. Thank you, Peter. The proposal on the table is a Roswell proposal. And that's, and an elected body, elected leadership, by the way, we deal with all the, you know, it's so frustrating sometimes just being a resident that gets elected, and we're responsible, and I'm a big believer in representative government, which to me means something constitutionally. And a lot of times think, everybody wants to democratize every decision. Well, you democratized it when you elected Peter Vanstrom, Christine Lee, Lee, Will, Mike, and Sarah, and me. Like, there's representative government, so we're responsible for making decisions. Well, that did happen in 2012. And guess what? What some people say, we don't like the decision made in 2000, those folks made in 2012. I'm with you. And we came in, got informed, and say, what can we do about this decision that was made 10 years previous? And what we're finding out is, truthfully, we can't do a lot about it. That's the, that's the real answer. The real answer is, we can't do a lot about it.
Well, I was talking with a resident at Riverdale, and they were saying that they had a meeting with the city either a year ago or more, at least a year ago, about the status of what would be acquired there. And they don't know, like, they were waiting for the answer to come back.
From us?
Well, the city's not doing the acquisition, because it's, so it's all GDOT's fully controlling the acquisition.
They do understand that, but they were communicating, they were getting their information from the city.
Gotcha.
And the city was saying, we're gonna come back to you, you know, with how much land is gonna be taken. And they said that, you know, so they came to me, what, you know, what?
Help!
Because they're updating on Gateway.
One of the things I hope that maybe this, over the course of time, will do, I want to stop pointing fingers. Like, so if I own the decision, the council owns the decision, it's like, hey, I own that decision. If it's somebody else making the decision, and let's get clarity about who's making the decision, or create, and I'm not a big fan, you probably heard me say it, I don't like the word transparency, because in the corporate environment, it usually means just the opposite. So I kind of have this built-in trouble with it. So I'm working on using the word. Illuminate, make obvious, open up the doors, clear pathways of information, transparent. And one of the things that I've seen is actually, there's a ring around the rosy. I'm not, I don't, I don't really want to make a decision, and I don't want to really tell you how to get to that pathway of making a decision. And that has been a longstanding problem, in my opinion. Because Gateway's controversial, so people are gonna be mad at you. So you don't want to say clearly, like, hey, I can't do anything about it. We're the people, doggone it, you should be able to do something about it. I hear you. I hear you loud and clear. I can't. I'm trying. Like, unless you can create a public site and get the entire state to vote against it, I don't think, we, we don't have that authority. And people don't want to hear that. Like, doggone it, I don't want it to happen. I'm with you. I'd like to change it too. I, I can't. I'm trying. We're trying through soft diplomatic means, saying, hey, can we be, are there some things we can amend? But there's, this thing's so far down the path. To Michael's point was like, we need to help get answers when like, hey, there's not clarity on that. Somebody says, we don't know what's gonna happen. And to that point, like, well, then we need to help. And I think part of that's establishing a better relationship with the state. So the state feels like, the state's not crazy about us historically, we vacillate. So they, you know, like, can we trust those guys? Can we trust those guys in council? I'm not so sure, because they're gonna run the bus back over us. And that's why I want to say to like the Peter's point, it's our plan. Now, the state's taken that plan and gone well down the road with it, and they're gonna come back and say, we're saying, can we amend it? And they're going, guys, we're pretty far down the road on this. That's kind of the conversation. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
All right, still the floor, this is your floor.
Well, what's the agenda for today?
This is it. This is a new agenda. You're the agenda. You can ask us anything you want to, literally.
Well, I really think, you know...
The only thing I can think of, we could say $12 million.
Be a bit more about what you all have planned.
It's kind of a last...
Your Q and A.
Create more continuous flow, like Riverside becomes Azalea and it's caused to flow.
I was only mentioned earlier that you were going to, this formal statement we're hearing, obviously, I was there for someone more days. And I've gotten some questions from residents who are curious to know what's coming out of it. So obviously, there's this formal statement, but can you talk about some actionable items that may have come out of the retreat and what the process will be for implementing any actionable items?
I think for me, so if there's, there's only one person to blame with respect to the retreat, that's me. Because I'm kind of responsible behind the scenes for putting together what's gonna happen, what's not gonna happen. You were there for two days. So you could probably answer that question as well as anybody, because the primary emphasis, so if I were to put like the big five up, which we really haven't done. So last year, we came up with a 100-day plan. We had 41 initiatives behind the scene. We knocked out 38 of those, right? We're now in the follow-up piece to the first 100-day plan and the, and the 38 of the 41 initiatives we executed in 2022. We haven't put the overarching piece, because if I told you what the overarching piece is, the master plan, we're redeveloping it right now. But I can tell you what some of that is. Economic development or economic redevelopment. That is a cornerstone of what we're working on. Another one is, hey, how do we make this city work in a way that's truly friendly? I will tell you the way Randy designed, verbalized it to me last summer, and he and I have been here the same amount of time, he said, this is a city of no. And so the reason I tell you that, you say, where am I going with this? I want to make, how is this truly a city of yes? Christine said, when we were going through our planning in December of 2021, she said, well, what Nordstrom customer service? So that's kind of an elegant way of saying, we want to become a city of yes with clarity. But part of that, Delaney, is, is the organization has to behave differently. So the organization is set up through years and years and years, not of benevolence, right? But certainly not of benevolence. In other words, if you come in today and you walk in and you want to get a permit as an individual or as a business, it's a very complicated process. And kind of like this conversation we had, there's, you get pushed in a lot of different directions. So we want to change the organization, that's really what the retreat was about.
Yes.
Okay? That was an organization, so overarching goal, economic development. Two, institutionally, what I want to live well beyond me and this council, is that whatever electeds come in, is that what their policy and vision can be executed with expediency as long as it's logical, clear, ethical, moral, right, and not illegal? So that whatever their policies can be executed in a manner that makes sense and an expeditious manner. And not be clogged up with the organization's kind of internal dysfunction. And the dysfunction comes from us, as elected leaders, in my opinion, for years and years and years of not being clear. And so then a lot of institutions, the institution acts like not clear. The institution kind of keeps moving down the road, but the pathway of what it's executing is unclear. And so I'm trying to unpack that. That's what the retreat was about. Organizational behavior, and how do you change that? How do you change this organization? How do you empower whoever it is to say, and we all go through this in our daily life, had this conversation yesterday with community development, a smart guy running it. And I said, Jason, do you walk in sometimes, if you were an outsider, you walked in, would you say that that makes sense? He said, no. I said, exactly. That's what I want you guys to change. I want us organizationally to be empowered, or to say, you know what, there's a law or an ordinance there, or a policy that says, I can't do anything about it because I work inside the organization, so I don't have the authority, to come to say very clarity to the electeds, you have a bad ordinance, we have a bad ordinance, there's a bad policy written, most of them are unwritten, by the way, that's in place, I'm empowered to change that. Like, that doesn't make sense, so why do we do that? And everybody throws their hands up and says, I don't know why we do that. Okay? Well, are you waiting for the mayor to say something about it? So for me, it's about organizational, the organization of being able to function in a much different way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what that was, that's what you suffered through. That is what you suffered through. And if you stay the next day, it was more suffering and torture. And it was suffering and torture for everybody there, because that's hard stuff when you start getting in the organization and saying, Delaney, doggone it, you make that decision. But you knew, you're gonna say, well, wait a minute, you're the mayor, I want you to make that decision. Wait a minute. There's some, that's a, that's just common sense. Can you fix that? You can fix, I want you to fix that. You want the mayor to fix that? Come on, mayors come and go. You're here for 30 years, you'll fix that. Yeah, but I can't fix it, because your policy Z says this, and your ordinance Y says this, and my accreditation association says this. Boom, 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 boom. Oh, okay. So we're not going to do what makes common sense. That is, and by the way, we all deal with this in corporate America and it's organized, not just governments, right? So doing things and empowering people to say, do the right thing, do what makes sense, solve the problem and forget about, and tell us, if we're part of the problem, tell us so we can change it for the organization. That's what the retreat was about. And that was a last minute deal by me. Because the retreat was going to be about bomb, 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 bomb. Right? Some planning, boom, 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 boom. And I got into it and I said, man, at the beginning of twenty twenty-three, we have got to change our organization to work in an expeditious matter of just tackling things. Because if you, these six people can't do it. They're responsible for policy. These six people, they're responsible for policy. They're not responsible for execution. The talent in the city is responsible for execution. And so as long as there's clarity, and so the challenge with electeds is, are you being clear? Are you giving clear policy? Or are you giving mixed signals? And I will tell you that most times I think elected officials give mixed signals. Right? Hey, I want to do this. Okay, sounds a good idea. And then underneath, there's a brush fire. And then there's all of a sudden, press jumps on them, some elect, and then some people get unhappy. And, oh, I didn't really mean that. What I really meant was this. No. Our job is to be accountable for clear policy and to stick by it. And then if we get informed and say, well, that was a wrong decision or wrong policy. Okay, change it. You know, mature people should be able to change your minds. But is to have the courage. And I'm very proud of these people because I think in twenty twenty-two, they stuck by their guns. And that's hard in the elected world. And it's really hard in Roswell, Delaney, as you're probably finding out up here in Northfall. This is a very amplified political town. It's kind of like America today. Like everybody's in their silos, they want to beat up on each other and like, well, if you're with Mike Valerio, you're either good or bad. If you're with Sarah Beeson, you're either good or bad. People pick sides. And it's personal, it's like, no. Our job is to get, I won't use the right word that Lee would use. Our job is to get stuff done.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that.
So, by the way, so forgive me. I want to do this more often. You could do it with me. Like literally, there's no questions. I want you to know, like I said, I'm not a big fan of the word transparency because it means something different to me from corporate world. I don't have anything to hide. I don't think they have anything to hide. And I think there's a belief out there that we're hiding stuff. Not because of us, because of the, of the longstanding crap that's gone in our city. And I will tell you, there are things like the real estate side or personnel side, I can't talk about, obviously, just like you can't talk about. But you guys can imagine, imagine you're in your newsroom or you're with your boss, right? Or your editor, whatever. And you think about some of the stuff that you throw up against the wall, right? You say, can we do this? Can we do this? And somebody says, oh, no, we can't do that. That's a bad idea. Or that's a crazy idea. Or we'll get killed for that. Or think about that in real world. That's what we're trying to do all the time. And anything comes, that's a horrible idea. Well, you, how, if everything gets sanitized or marginalized, how do you ever get to truth? How do you ever really start solving problems unless you're willing to say? And by the way, I as a resident, I'm going to, that's, it comes out of context. Bam! You know, like, who, and that's what's happened in the city. The elected officials have been paralyzed to take action because they get clobbered in this town. They get clobbered, in my opinion. And so, well, I'm just a resident, man. I just became a city councilman. Why do I want to get clobbered? Because I don't think anybody here is running. There may be, somebody in this room may be dumb enough to run for mayor. I don't know who that is. But I don't think anybody's running for state house or state rep or senator or congress or governor. We're just residents, you know, that want to solve problems and we're going to solve problems.
Or H O A president.
H O A president, God bless you.
I didn't think that was bad.
So you forgive me for not, for being, not having a very prepared thing. We got plenty we can talk about. I mean, literally, but the floor is open. I got it. When you guys, it's like some things like, you guys probably know, I'd love to socialize stuff. There's stuff I'd love to talk about and put in the public domain. I can't. Because it would kill it. It would kill it. It would kill it. It would kill it. And it's in the best long-term interest of the city. And I can't even socialize. I can't put it into the room. I can't put it with you because it would kill it. And that's crazy to me. But that's where we are today. Anybody got anything? Oh, we are going to go to Oxbow after this, which you're welcome to join us. We're going to go to Oxbow Road after this, talk about controversial. We're going to go to Oxbow Road and we're going to walk it because the DOT has marked some of the leads, right?
The medians.
Some of the medians. And so before that road gets opened, we want to make sure that we've got enough traffic calming measures in place. So kind of before like, so you know that road's going to be open by Christmas of twenty twenty-three. And, but what we want to make sure is before it gets open, that everybody's on board, staff, talent wise. I hate the word staff, by the way, just to let you know. So I'm always trying to find a better term. And that the electeds and the talent are on the same side of gate. We're ready to open the road. And so we're going to go afterwards, we're going to go out there as a group socially and walk it and say, we're going to take a look at the markings, which is a very process.
Placement, number of medians, mountable or planted, the width of those, where they line up with or don't line up with fire hydrants, that kind of thing.
Planted, planted versus.
Mounted.
Yes.
Solid, yeah.
Hard escape, yeah.
So these are the same.
Mountable.
Controversial measures that have been discussed with transportation advisors.
Yes, yes. So rather than make a, make a decision sitting in the room, we're going to go physically look at it. Makes a big difference on our perspective and how our residents and our visitors view that and experience that.
Adrian, I can't remember. I don't have your email and I apologize. There was something else you wanted to ask about besides Gateway. I'm so sorry. Let me see if I can.
I do want to ask you, even though you all approved the taking steps to manage, for the city to manage its own elections, is that a definite? I mean, is it, are you going to, is that an absolute?
Can I give you my opinion? Because here this, this is dangerous. Here's the problem, right? So that has to be a decision by the elected body, right? And that's a conversation that like, that has not been socialized. There's been conversations about it, other than what you saw in the dials, right? And the workshop. But there's not been a formal answer. I can give you what my opinion on it is, mine as the mayor. And maybe each council member can speak to it. I can tell you what my opinion on it is. And the council may say, you're wrong and we're going to go in an opposite direction. My opinion is, is that we have so much going on right now as a city that you get one chance to do that right. If you screw it up, right? You've killed the opportunity to ever do it again. So what my opinion is as the mayor is, it's probably best to say formally, we're going to do that in twenty twenty-five and to push that off, to make a very clear pathway for twenty twenty-five, that we're going to have a municipal election in twenty twenty-five, not in twenty twenty-three. Because I don't, the stakes are so high on that that I don't want us to screw that up because we've got so much else going on. Because I do think it's important that we hold municipal elections. I think our residents would like for us to have municipal elections. I don't think though, like, you just, just a little small taste. There is so much going on in this city from an elected and staff, talent perspective, that putting into that mix, even though Milton has done due diligence for eighteen months, Alpharetta has done some due diligence. Our due diligence has been basically informed by them. And so, and without a very, very talented elected official, which those are not just, hey, come on in. By the way, we're going to pay you two hundred thousand dollars. Come on in. Okay, let's go run the election in November. That scares the stew out of me. So I'm, I would suggest and recommend that we start on a pathway that we are formally going to run the elections in twenty twenty-five and make a commitment to do that and begin the process of doing it. That's my opinion. I cannot tell you what the council believes on that. And they may say, Kurt, you're wrong. We're moving forward and we're going to do elections in November. But my perspective is formally go ahead and commit to doing it in twenty twenty-five.
And, and so I, I agree with the position that I believe there needs to be more due diligence in the sense that I think just, there's, there's too much of a risk to travel rush it this year. So I agree completely with the position. That being said, if there is a consensus, the majority of this mayor and council agree with that, then I feel Monday night, we need to have, we need to have an item, which, which is, we need to be working with Fulton County. Because what they proposed was obviously focused on the increased cost that Fulton County was charging. But I feel there wasn't enough focus on the fact that they were decreasing service to Roswell residents and, and not, not the case in other communities. So I think, I think we really need to fight for, for really voters' access and not decreasing their voting locations. So I, I think if that's, if that's the direction that the majority agrees with, I think without a doubt, we need to be going to Fulton County.
Especially, just to add in, the biggest thing was removing East Roswell.
Exactly. The fact that.
That's critical.
That historically, there's always the location at the Roswell Library, which is on the west side. There's the East Roswell Library, which supports the east side of Roswell as well as other, other people in Fulton County. And with Fulton County taking that away, I don't know if they know what a big deal that is with voters' access. It's absolutely creating, creating a hardship, creating it harder to vote. And we need to, we need to really get vocal and make sure we share our position that they need to, to continue the service they offered in the past.
Well, I don't share that opinion. I absolutely believe we should be running our own elections. I think it's a responsibility to our residents and I have mad respect for every single council member and our mayor, of course. Every single person. And that's one of the things that I really enjoy about this job is that we can have differences like that and still work them out. I don't think it's a rush job. I think everything that we do is a tidal wave coming at our faces and our backs at the same time. So to say that this is a rush job, I disagree. I think every single topic that was discussed at the bond that we talked about last year that was put on the hundred day plan, every single one of them is a rush job. Every sing, every single one is our hair is on fire in Roswell. And then we hear it from other people in other cities. And then we hear it from our residents and we hear it from that side of my street and the other side of my street. It's just the business as usual, as far as that goes. So with all due respect, it feels like a rush and people want to spin it as a rush. But I don't agree with that. I agree with the fact that we all work together and make an honest and earnest effort to get things done. And I feel that the residents of Roswell are sick of Fulton County with a bait and switch. I think they're tired of being told one thing and served up another. And I'm going to represent those people that are tired of it. I mean, for crying out loud, we took, we rescued East Roswell from Fulton County and now they're taking away their rights, you know, to have a place to go vote. So I have a lot of problems with Fulton County. There are many individuals within the county that I think are fantastic, but they're fighting that tidal wave that keeps coming after us. So I, I do believe that we have the talent that is elected. I believe we have the talent that is hired within our city to execute a stellar municipal election this year. I am absolutely listening to my colleagues about the concerns and I think all of you represent people that, some I know, you know, that feel the same way and others that do not. But I, knowing what we've talked about in small groups, and by that I mean a group with some of the leadership in the city and a group with some other, never all of us together because that hadn't been a legal possibility. But about reorganizing how we run the city, I don't know that right now, we have identified a body to be able to manage that in the best way as of March tenth, twenty twenty-three at ten fifteen or whatever, ten thirty that it is. I don't think that we have that identified yet. Can we do that to run an efficient and excellent election this fall? I absolutely think we can do that. But it is a challenge right now that is stacked up in a myriad of humongous efforts that we want to execute well. So I am listening, but I want to tell you, I will continue to push on this body to run municipal elections here. It is time. I will continue to be that person, elected or not, to push on that. I think it's a responsibility that we owe our residents.
Peter, any thoughts?
I, I would, I would just share my number one concern for the residents is, is the bond referendum that they just voted in a hundred and eighty some million dollars for, for us to, to make sure is handled correctly and that we take care of all of the maintenance that, for the parks and, and we have a parking deck that needs to get done and we've got all the sidewalk issues. That's a very big, tall order. And then we have economic development and redevelopment strategies that are going on that are taking up a lot of our time. I would challenge councilmen, if, if you are that gung ho about it and can make it happen, then that's a challenge I would, I would give to Lee. Because I don't have the bandwidth to make sure that it comes out and is correct. And so I'm not opposed to doing it right. And I will, I will admit.
I hear you.
I, I don't have the time. And if somebody on this council takes it up and champions it and gets it done, I'm not opposed to that. So that's where I would leave my comment on that.
Willie.
Just like to take a practical approach to it. Very straightforward. If we're ready, all four of you, if we're not ready, then let's see what we can do to make sure this is what we need to do. It's like, to the best of our ability, and that's just a very straight approach. Whether you're ready or not, and this, that's the same question. Am I in favor of us being in charge of this? Yes, I'm in favor of us being in charge of it. To your point, we need to do it right. Make sure it's done the right way. Make sure there are stop camps, there are, there are any issues. The best possible way. Yeah. We can do it right if we're all ready.
I want to, I don't want to run the bus over anybody.
And that wasn't my intention. I was just.
No, 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 no. I just kind of say.
Absolutely.
You, you and I have been involved in some conversations and I don't know who else on the council has. It scared me to death. Absolutely stopped me in my tracks. When I heard a significant person in our talent, basically, who said, I'm going to get trained for elections, but let me be clear, I'm not going to run an election. Now.
That was my point.
Okay. So that, that person stopped me in my tracks and said, I'll get trained, but I'm not going to run an election.
And for clarification, this is a hired staff member.
It is a significant person in the organization.
Thank you.
Right? And that stopped me in my tracks, like, well, because I've talked to the significant people in Milton. I've talked to the significant people in John Creve. I've talked to significant people in Milton and Alpharetta, sorry. I know what their temperature is, good and bad, right? Like clearly Milton, Milton's forty-one thousand residents going to have four thousand voters, right? Totally different process. Roswell is a hundred thousand people and it's going to have fifteen to twenty thousand voters, right? With a bunch of precincts. And we're a much bigger presence. Like we cannot screw this up. Like the most sacred thing that any of us have is our right to vote. It is our first expression of our freedom, right? You can't disenfranchise anybody. You can't, you can't have any glitches. Like to your point, Lee, I don't think, I think like, like, everybody agrees with you. Fulton County has not done a fantastic job and that's an understatement. And keeping it in Fulton County's hands, that's why some people say, eh, I don't know if that's the best thing for the voter. Like at the end of the day, for a whole host of issues, it became about money in the short term because that was easy, right? It's easy to talk about money and say, well, we'll take it away because of money. Made us, gave it a nice, easy little excuse. The reality was, there's real other issues there. The issues of franchisement, the issues of competency. What scares me about this is, I don't want to be incompetent because I'm pulling it off in eight months and I don't have an election superintendent. He or she is not in my wheelhouse today, who can pull this off? I've not identified that person. Milton has identified it internally and said, you know what? We got the competency to run this election and we're willing to do it. Alpharetta has said the same thing. We got the competency to run the election and we're going to do it. You and I haven't gotten that. You and I got it from a significant person. I'll get trained, but I'm not running it. Oh. Uh-oh. Well, who's going to go? Peter, you're in charge of elections, Al. I want you to go get an election superintendent, like you just said. But Kurt, we're in charge of economic development for the city. I get, I'm trying to get the parking garage piece done. I work on economic development on the east side. I'm working on economic development on the east side. I'm working on economic development on Highway 9, 92. Wait a minute, you want me to go get an election superintendent? Wait a minute, that's not in my wheelhouse. Isn't that in the talent's wheelhouse? So I'm with you, sis. I just don't know how to competently pull that off. And I get, like you said, people say, damn it, you do it. We're the people and you go do it, damn it. I hear you. But if I do it wrong, I screw it up for you, I screw it up for me, I screw it up for the city forevermore. It will not be a conversation. It'll be, oh, what a laughing stock. And they'll say, well, it's not that hard. Eh, eh. You know, beware of those who tell you things aren't that hard. Like it's not been my experience in life. So, and I know what you got on your plate. Like you got, like what Peter said, like, oh my God. Hey, by the way, Roswell's got the most aggressive campaign it has in the history of its life. Oh, by the way, send elections to it for fun. Okay. Who's got it? Al, you got it? You got the election piece? Christine, you got it? Willie, you got it? Sarah, do you have it? Peter, you got it? Lee?
I might.
Okay.
Sounds like it's me. All right. Challenge accepted. I'm open for conversation, but I do, I agree. We haven't identified the master of that plan, so.
We need, we need somebody top shelf and I don't want Milton's and I don't want Alpharetta's and I don't want John Crees.
With all due respect.
Right?
This is on us.
It's on us.
Yeah.
And I think everybody in this room feels the same way. Everybody wants to do municipal elections. And I think would everybody feel comfortable saying, hey, we're going to make a full-fledged commitment that we are going to do municipal elections in the city of Roswell? It may be 2025, not 2023, but would everyone feel comfortable saying that? Let me say it for my part. I would. I'm comfortable saying that. Is anybody else comfortable saying that?
To decline this year, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying is going in to make a statement that we will do municipal elections in the city of Roswell in 2025.
Yes.
And challenge Lee to have it done by 2024.
Peter. Okay, that's going to require state change so we can bring the presidential to Roswell as well. I'm going to have to resign from my liaison. I will do that. So you just backed up.
But I do appreciate that your enthusiasm to get it done.
I know, but I want to get beyond conversation and make a hard decision. To the point, I want to get beyond conversation, make a commitment, in, out. Like this dilly-dally that we, this, you know, this dance that we do of, well, let's talk about it. Damn it, quit talking about it. Make a hard decision, accept the consequences of the hard decision, right? Hey, we're out. We're not going to do elections. Boom. Okay, you're going to get crushed. Fine. You made a hard decision. Now you can go on and take care of other parts of the business of the city of Roswell you need to be working on. And I think that, right, the meandering kills us, right, historically. When you try to dance like, make a damn decision, you know? You might get informed and change the decision or the people may say, look, they may show up and 90,000 people show up, damn it, you're going to do elections. I don't know how we're going to do elections, but okay, 90,000 people, we're going to do elections. That's the foremost priority of the city? Because let's explain to you what we're working, we believe what you've told us to do beforehand. That's what we're working on. Like, hey, you told us. Okay, you want us to change those priorities? Kind of like Gateway. Okay, I don't know who made that decision, Adrian. I don't, I wasn't involved in 1998 or 2006 or 2010 or 2012. I don't know who made that decision, but somebody made a decision, right? And then, well, I want you to come back and unpack it. Okay, I did. I came back and unpacked the decision and found out elected's already made a decision, state worked on that. Now we're saying, can we amend that a little bit? That's reality of what's happening. I'm willing to say to the answer to the question, committing to doing municipal elections in 2025. Like we will do municipal elections in 25 and vote on that as a formal proposition. Go ahead and put that process at work. I'm willing to say that. Does anybody else want to say that?
Sure.
I'm not voting, by the way. You guys got to vote on this. Michael?
I think it's, I mean, I think it's something that we absolutely, is a direction we should go in. My other thing is though, I thought we discussed there was opportunity for creating scalability with the other cities. And it's just, I feel like I'm not really seeing or hearing that as much where I feel like there needs to be more runway and to make that path, I think, more feasible involves finding a scalability.
Scalability is how the issue came up. Seemed logical. Seemed like, hey, we're using the, knowing the scale, but the congruence of forces and information and have a real election superintendent in play, right? A non-political person competent running the process for all. That changed. It changed and Milton said, hey, we're running the election, we don't really care. And I don't mean that like they said, look, we got this, we're doing, kind of like Lee said, damn it, I don't care what you're doing, but we're doing this. And Alpharetta's kind of said a little more, oh, not quite as definitive, saying, oh, we're doing the election too. But, you know, the pool of resources kind of equation went out the window. I'm not sure why it went out the window. I think because some of the political process started to show some tension. And so all of a sudden it became like, well, doesn't sound like we're doing it as a team anymore like North Fulton County, which to me makes sense. Bigger resource, more. I don't know why that went away, but it doesn't appear to be on the table today. Like it really, yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting until you finished.
Oh, you cut me off because I go on too long.
No, I wanted to just get more clarity along the lines of what you're saying. So there's the idea that the cities would have a superintendent that you, that would manage the elections for all the cities is no longer the case. And is, I'm asking you a question. And is that correct or and each city would hire or have internally a person that would manage the elections? So it's changed from one scenario to another scenario?
Adrian, this is my interpretation to Mike's question and your question. When I went into this, I was thinking this was going to be Alpharetta, Milton, John's Creek, Mountain Park and us, right? And that it was going to be a joint municipal election by an election superintendent that we were going to hire. That was my understanding going into it. Being that these are all four sovereign, five, four, five sovereign cities, right? There's been some different pathways coming out of this and the fact that there's not been, part of the process was to say, hey, let's work through a timetable, very short, and come to a conclusion on that. That has changed somehow and I can't give you great clarity on that. I'm not sure why that's changed. I think because Milton was so far ahead of the process, Milton said, damn it, we're doing it. When you guys are in or out, we're doing it. We got it figured out. And so the, I think the thing about the election superintendent, they felt more comfortable like whether we get election superintendent or not, we got it. We've got the competency to do this. And then Alpharetta kind of jumped on that. Well, those are kind of silos. So I don't know what's happened to that conversation. I know the last time I had a conversation with the other mayors, it kind of fell into a silo discussion. And John's Creek and Roswell are a little bit bigger, right? So that's a little more complicated. And I remember that conversation taking place like, we're bigger cities, more precincts, there's a little bit more of an undertaking. Plus, if we're not, if we don't, we don't have an 18 months where we've been working on this. You've been working on this for 18 months. So if we're using your information as a pool to do this as a body, that's one thing. But starting from scratch is like, oh shit, I gotta go get my election superintendent? I thought we were getting an election superintendent as a group, to Mike's point. That's what I thought we were doing. Now all of a sudden it's like, oh, you know, and the apparatus of the city that you kind of heard clearly is like, we're not ready to run an election from a city perspective. We, our people aren't trained and I don't think our people want to take on that responsibility, which tells me we gotta go get an election superintendent. Well, that's a daunting process for 30 days and that's really where we're at.
Don't you have to let Fulton County know by March 31st?
Exactly. I just said 30 days, 21 days. Yeah, yeah, yes.
So you all will, I guess to Councilman Palermo's point earlier, would you be discussing that or bringing that up in a future meeting or?
We have to, yes.
Yeah. Between now and March 31st.
See, this meeting is helping socialize the issue.
Good questions.
You could blame me for lack of clarity and lack of leadership because we haven't discussed it with clarity because I've not had great clarity from us. The last meeting I have with my sister cities was where are we? And they kind of got the feeling, I'm doing this, I'm doing this. Kind of like, well, we're not doing all this together. I'm doing this, I'm doing this. We're not doing this. I'm doing this, I'm doing this. Okay. Kind of what we're having.
So it seems from what you're saying, the IGA is not as much of a focus anymore, but I'm curious to know if you've had any conversations or if John's Creek's decision to not run for our elections had any bearings on the way that you're approaching this for 2020? Because they are also saying for 2025, they'd like to, you know, continue pursuing it, but given their findings about it and their decision, I was curious to know how much that had an impact on where you're at now.
I would answer that in reverse.
Team, I expect. Do you want to explain?
Well, I mean.
No more questions.
I mean, you hear the, so you're getting a little flavor, right? The same flavor happens when we're talking, I'm talking with my colleagues, kind of asking the same questions, like kind of openly like, are you ready for this prime time? Are you ready? Like you understand the consequences of this. It's kind of the same flavor, I would just say, you know, these conversations, to your point, are, we try to, we're trying to have better relationships with our sister cities. I think that's really important, having more open conversations. And I would say, no, John's Creek did not have an influence on us.
I don't think so either.
As a matter of fact.
I've talked to many of their council members about this very topic.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, I would say that perhaps those same questions you've heard here perhaps got raised for them. Like, are you ready? Are you ready to go?
And on that, that part in this, you're kind of echoing what you were saying. So would you characterize the city council meeting, special call city council meeting as a sort of public hearing component for this with the residents of Roswell and that is the opportunity for them to engage? Or do you have plans to have another public hearing opportunity prior to the March 31st deadline or after it, considering a 2025 opportunity?
Great question. The answer is, do I want to have a special call public hearing meeting on elections before March 31st? Probably not. I think it's responsibility of this body to make a decision and then stick with it.
100% support the mayor.
And, you know, Delaney, I'll probably get run out of town and I, you know, again and again, I'm going to keep the same thing. It's like, I think that elected leadership historically has used public format as an excuse to get paralyzed and not make a decision. Like let the people weigh in. Well, 300 people weigh in. There's 100,000 people living in this city. And I'm responsible as well as these six people for representing all 100,000 people and not falling to the narrative of 350 people or whatever the press writes. Like I gotta make a decision. Press, and this is a perfect example, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, right? But I can't make it just based upon what the noise is in the atmosphere. And I really truly feel like that's one of the things that's happened to us as a people, not just a Roswell, but as a republic. It's like, well, there's a lot of noise, you're going to get killed politically. Don't go and do the right thing. Do what you believe is the right thing to do. Be informed. That means get people's information, but you can't, the democratization process happens through elections. It happens through elections. And you elect representatives, your fellow people to go act on your behalf. That's really important in representative government. And I think we forget that sometimes. And so this city, and I don't care if I get killed on this or not, has this misnomer that everything is a giant deed. Like if I put it out in the public, well, 300 people are amped up and come out and beat the stew out of me, then I'm going to change my perspective on it. That's a wrong way to run a government. That's a wrong way to make decisions. That doesn't mean I don't get informed. Hey, and I've said that, we will go see anybody, anyplace, anytime, anywhere. It's kind of like this, I want to open it up. I don't want to shut it down. I want to open up the conversation. But the end of the day, let's say we do a public hearing and 300 people show up and they are amped up, all in, you better do elections. And they're clear and they raise unholy, you know what in that meeting. Historically, we said, we're doggone it, we better do elections. And you hear the conversation here is like, okay, and I'm trying to get clarity, can we commit to elections in 2025? I want to get clarity on this body's perspective on that. You hear my perspective is, I don't care if 300 people come in and say, we've got to do elections in 2023. I would say, I don't think that's in the best interest of the city. And they're going to say, well, damn it, you better do it. I'm saying, I'm not going to do it. Because you elected me as a representative of you to make decisions for you. So of course, that would be my answer to that. And they'll say, well, we're going to run a petition out of you and get you elected or run you out of town. Okay, you elected me to make decisions. I'm going to make decisions. I'm not doing it from an authoritarian perspective, I'm doing it because I'm going to live here the rest of my life and I'm a resident. And I think you hired me, short term, to put real intentionality into the decision, real strategy in the city, have clear policies and then act on those policies. And you didn't ask me to be like, hey, whatever you decide short term to get unhappy about, you want me to succumb to. That's how we have run for a long time.
Well, I don't think we need a public, a public comment session. I'm hearing from people on the phone weekly about elections. I know who they are and they're representing more than just their household.
Absolutely.
So I don't, and that's not to shut anybody down. We have, we have, my self, personal cell phone is my city phone. My email is out there. My 22-year-old personal email is all over Ros Vegas. So they know how to find me. I'm just, I think it's a waste of our residents' time on that. And I think you're exactly right, Mayor, that we have a responsibility to do in order, you know, in order of priority, the best of our ability.
But make a transparent decision. One thing I would say like drives me crazy is then when the electeds make a decision and they're not very public, clear and above board about it. Because a lot of decisions have been made in the city. Peter brought it up earlier. Well, there's a lot of decisions have been made. I'm not so sure how clear those were. I'm not so sure how obvious those were. I'm not so sure like people said, this is what I voted for, this is what I did. Like, so that you're clear on it. I think too much obfuscation has been the rule of the day.
What was the reason to hold a vote at the special call meeting? To take steps to conduct the, your own election instead of just having the public, you know, why not just have a public comment as they did? What was the intention of having the vote?
That was to move forward toward the IGA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the intention of moving forward with an IGA with a, with a shared hired superintendent. So that would be a much more formal agreement in that respect. Of course, informing our residents. Again, I have got, I've had in-person meetings and phone calls.
Can I answer that question? To me, the people are voting. So when the council votes as a representative of the people, you're right. Like if you notice, I said something. If they all say something differently, they're the voting body, they have the authority, I don't, right? They have the authority. And so it's calling for what do you want? What do you want, people? What do the people want? The six council vote on it. So the six, to answer your question is, what do you want, people? What say ye? What do the people say? That's, that's my thinking on it. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking that the decision was made that yes, we want to hold our own elections. And of course, anything could change at any time because you explained that things have changed, dynamics have changed. But that was giving the impression that Roswell will manage its own elections.
And I'm all in for that. And that's what I asked the council earlier. Will you commit to doing that by 2025 or no, are you going to say we're doing it in 2023? So you heard the question on the floor, live in person. By the way, this is an open meeting and it is being recorded for posterity. Questions on the floor. Do you support Roswell doing its municipal elections? I, as the mayor, say absolutely. I, as the mayor, say, commit to doing it in 2025 forevermore. Get your, get your act together and commit to doing municipal elections in the city of Roswell beginning 2025. That's my position. Council's got to weigh in. Council will say, nope, we're going to do it in 2023, right? We're going to do it in 2023. I'm suggesting do it in 2025. So you're getting a live action, which then they would have to go to the dais and then be voted on. And you heard a little bit of the conversation earlier.
What was the wording of the motion, I'm trying to recall it from the special call meeting, if I remember correctly, it was something about doing due diligence? Was it, I feel like it was non-combative to either of my, I think it was more of just covering. So did you, do you feel that you accomplished that due diligence or is that something else?
You know, anytime, anytime you don't have clarity, you're probably doing due diligence, But ultimately, you have to bring clarity. So this process has been doing due diligence, right? Going through the process of, hey, will the people who are hired by the city inside the city be willing to get trained? Hey, if they get trained, are they willing to hold the election? Right? Like, there's no gun being put in anybody's head. Would you be, would you be willing to do that? That's been done, both of those. Three, would you be willing to go out there and put the resources to go help us find the right people who help to run an election? Probably not as much clarity on that. Four, and you, you heard it, who's gonna run? Who's gonna be on the council side doing this? Which is really not their job, if you will, right? It's not the mayor's job or the council person's job to go and say, I will be the benefactor of going out and creating special elections. They may say it from a policy perspective, but logistically, to answer your question, Delaney, yes, the due diligence has been done on it. Some of that's been given clarity, some of that has not been given clarity. And so when you don't have an answer about the clarity, you got your answer on clarity. Does that make sense? So, um, that's why you kind of hear me going, running scared, like, oh my God, I don't want to do an election in 2023, because I don't have clarity that I can pull it off. I mean, I, I mean us. And, um, if I had clarity and somebody said, I got it, I know what I'm doing, I got the resources, I've talked to the people, boom, we're ready to go. You tell us what we need to do, get approval from the council. Okay, not been the case, just the opposite. The second part of that due diligence process, talking to my sister cities, where are you? What happened to the congruent policy? I don't know what happened. I don't have clarity on that. All I know is one city went this way, one city went this way, another city was kind of like, thinking about it, right? And so the conversation's back to your earlier question, I just kind of asked to raise the same questions. Hey, man, don't jump in prime time. Don't get in prime time if you're not ready for it. Stakes are too high.
My, my push has never been to be first either. I, I don't, I want to clarify that. This isn't about being, Roswell's doing it first, with Milton or without Milton. It's about doing it well and doing it right. And I think it's the right thing to do by our citizens, by our residents. But again, I'm open to all conversation. I want to make sure that this is well-run. I'm still for it, with Peter's support.
I just wanted to circle back to, um, Councilman Perrler's comment earlier about the precincts. Um, did Fulton, did they inform the city that they were going to, um, eliminate one of the precincts compared to the last election?
They increased the cost and they decreased the early voting locations. So there, there have been two every year. One year before, they tried to take it away, it became clear, it created a hardship, and they added it back. But this year, they've just had it taken away without adding it back, which is why I'm saying if we're not gonna run our elections this year, we really need ASAP, we're reaching out to Fulton and, and telling them to eliminate the hardship they're creating on voters.
I, I gotta tell you, this is, and I'm just open Pandora's box on this, because you just said, did Fulton County tell you anything? It is so hard to communicate with Fulton County. It is like, that's why Lee's frustration is, I want the elections. Because it's so hard to communicate with them. Like, right now, we're trying to get an IGA done on the challenge. If I shared with you the ridiculousness of getting them to communicate, like, please, 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 beg, 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 not even negotiate, and to get an answer on trying to do something they want done. They want it done. And we can't get them to communicate. Like, please, text, phone, voicemails, emails, you name it. So that's where the frustration comes. Well, doggone it, I think if we run the elections, we'll do a better job. That's why the voters are all tickled, because they know the same thing we don't. Like, what are these people doing? Their organization's very dysfunctional.
Yes.
Very dysfunctional organization. So it can't even communicate the things it wants to do and get it done. Like, IGA and the general, a perfect example. So this frustration is, scares, scares me on this election thing, is like, well, Fulton County has said 12 different things on the elections. Publicly, literally, 12 different things. So where do we land on the elections? And we go with 2023, and the voters are gonna be ticked off at us, that, some of these voters, and they're rightly so, well, doggone it, you didn't do municipal elections 2023 and you had a chance. You're right. And look what Fulton County messed up. And they're gonna be right.
Oh, yeah, I can predict what's gonna happen.
Absolutely.
I absolutely doubt--
We could have done this better, why didn't you do this, et cetera, et cetera.
With a shoebox and torn up pieces of notebook paper. I, it's, I have no confidence.
So--
No confidence in Fulton County running elections.
When you ask Mike, say, you're like, that's something that I will tell you frankly. I don't know where Fulton County will truly land on this. See, Mike said, well, we need to ask them for precincts. Hey, we need an early voting precinct on the east side, just like we had it for. Yes, we will ask them for that. We might even get an agreement on it. Whether it gets pulled off or not, good luck.
Do the poll pads work? How many are delivered? How many people show up to be there to work it? How many votes are actually counted? And it goes on and on and on and on.
Like, Roswell had by far the most volunteers for 2021. By far. Not even close compared to our sister cities. People won the--
To all of Fulton County?
Yes, that's right.
All of Fulton County.
Wouldn't even close, the numbers weren't even close. If you talk to those people, they will tell you, like, um, they didn't want me, or they don't know how to use me, or they want me to work these ridiculous hours. I just want to volunteer. I want to be part of the electorate process. And then this motif is put over, I'm like, well, we're gonna make it hard for you to do that. That's not right.
There is still a volunteer, a worker, that hasn't been paid. Still, thousands of dollars that is currently in Roswell that has not been paid.
Would you be willing to share that person's information?
I will ask that person if that's okay, respectfully. But if, if that person says okay, I'll absolutely do that. I don't, that's one I know of. But that's continued to go on for the last several years that I know of. I haven't been that deep in the trenches before.
Delaney, I can see you're getting fired up back there, something--
Come on, Delaney.
Um, I, this is, of course, I don't know if you've had time or if you've spent the, the time to really talk about the logistics of it, but I'm curious about how, how far have you thought about the logistics of how Roswell runs municipal elections in terms of things like two-factor authentication, computer systems, IT, storing ballots if you use paper ballots, um, and the, and the undertakings? Because I feel like a lot of this conversation centered around the election superintendent, whereas there are so many other costs and other variables with running elections. So I wanted to know how much space that's been given in these discussions.
Well, I think that's why the commitment of when you do the election is the first question you answer. And then you're informed with, what are the pieces of the equation have to be answered? And how do those questions get answered? So for me, yes, sir, Peter?
No, I would just say you just hit the nail on the head, which is why we're having this discussion about are we ready? Because you just listed a whole bunch of stuff that has to be done. And are we gonna be ready to have that as organized as it needs to be, including somebody who's a superintendent to run it? So you, you just, you just summarized why we're all having the discussion of delaying it a, a year to make sure that we've got it all in order. I think that was really well put, because that's the concern.
Can you speak to the, the idea of paper ballots and the reliability of that? That's been something that's been really curious--
I can.
For me.
I can, Adrian. When I went to my first meeting, um, Lee was with me. Jamie was with me, and we met with the other mayors and the city managers. And Randy was with us, Randy. And so they submitted the Milton Plan. Right? They've done a lot of work on it. Um, Adrian, that was my first question. How much are scanners? Why don't you, can you not implement a simple scanner strategy to the back of the paper ballots? At that time, they said, we looked at it, this was the cost, we made, we made it, for us, but we're not saying that as a body, we can't do that. That would be up to us as a body. This is the first discussion we had as a group. Well, I can tell you, for me, it's a non-negotiable. You have to have scanners as a backup to paper ballots. No way, and I'll just say this for me, again, I don't have a vote, so I can be told no. No way would I ever support having paper ballots without scanners. No way. Doesn't make any, for us, with 15,000 to 20,000. For Milton, they have 4,000. Different decision, different deliberative process. But for us, to me, it'd be a non-negotiable. You have to have scanners.
Checks and balances.
And then also, on your early voting precincts, is there the two, that Roswell Library and East Roswell Library?
Yeah.
For us, not, I think it's non-negotiable. I think everybody would say, for us, we have to have that. And to your point, that's one of Michael's problems, like, wait a minute, Fulton County, you had two early voting processes. Why you coming back at us with one? You just took East Roswell out of the equation. Now you're just giving us West Roswell? And I don't know if you guys saw this or not, I'm sure you did. The 22, well, we just had 2022 election, right? We had a special election for senate and city council. Three-hour lines? Three-hour lines and early election votes. How many people did we disenfranchise in early voting in Fulton County and Roswell? Because we had one early vote, we had two, right?
We had two.
We had two. Two with two, with two. And how many people got disenfranchised as a consequence of that? That, that's to, kind of to your point, like, what are the, like, Delaney, I would ask you this question, I've asked an overreaching question, will we do elections in 2025 if they decide to do elections in 2025 or in 2023? How do you franchise more people? That's the whole point. The whole point of voting, right, is to make sure that the voice of the people is heard. Not a select number of people, but as many people who want to vote can vote. So to the point is like, if you have a practical problem and people want to early vote, you know, like, that's part of the equation, then you need to make sure that that is an option that doesn't disincline people from voting. If people want to vote in three-hour lines, there's people that are getting disenfranchised because they're making decisions not to vote. You know that. So I think to me, like, we are part of the overarching creatures, how do I get more people to vote?
The Christmas tree lighting night was the night best in line at the library. And that was, that was the topic in line, is how is this line moving faster? Why, why are we stuck here in this quicksand? Why is this the way? And that was the three-hour night. It was two, two hours, 15 minutes, standing straight up in line, once you hit the door, it was another 45 minutes to move the entire process. And I thought I had plenty of time to make the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. And I came in five minutes late. And there's just no real good reason.
Yet Fulton County would have you believe we have to have a fully-staffed precinct all, on both ends for a month, or whatever the number is, where you've got 35 people coming to vote and you've got a full staff. Yet we don't have a full staff on election day, or the last three days. I'm for whittling down early voting. I think it's absurd we have early voting that late. I know that I'm in the weeds, but it is a waste of resources. It's a waste of people's time. It's a waste of the narrative. It is a buzz, 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 early vote, all this advertising. I just feel like it's ridiculous. I mean, whittle it down to a week and a half. I mean, we've got 35, 16 people voting at some, you know, some days, early voting. It's ludicrous.
For the senate, um, the senate race, was that one precinct only that was open? Or was it East Roswell?
East Roswell was open too.
But to your point--
For those last three days, it was pretty, pretty busy.
But to your point, they've made a unilateral decision based upon the, uh, the plan submitted to us, is unilaterally, they took away an early voting precinct, when they're already overwhelmed. Now, it's a municipal election. That's fair, right? And to kind of Lee's point is, what are the resources that you're gonna put together for a municipal election? So in our case, if you have 15,000 to 20,000 voters, and historically, you're showing half of those voters are early and half of those voters are day on, you have to come up with, I think, is smart strategies to accommodate both of those. And what strategies do you employ to accommodate more in both of those? That, to me, ought to be part of the strategic process. How do I franchise more people? Early and day on?
Some of the due diligence that we were talking about earlier was regarding placement around town. And do we, as a city, have enough locations to do this? Absolutely. Javon, to you earlier, that was one of the questions we asked him, do the city locations, parks and right, do we have those buildings to house? Is it possible? Yeah, we have those. Not just that, but some of the places that are on the map are standing on top each other.
Yes, they need to be combined. No, they need to be combined. If you've got 30 people voting between the two in one day, that's ridiculous. It's a waste of the resource. I'm with you, Will, I mean, but it's not, it's not well thought out. I think that Fulton County is way too big to be, well, nor can they, because they turn their, look the other way, I believe, to actually dig down, drill down at the details and see what the need, actual needs are. Do you know there were more poll pads delivered in Mayor Wilson, Mortlin, Vanstrum, and Hills here, election, delivered at the early voting sites than the 2020 election? Do you know that in Roswell? There were more poll pads delivered for a municipal election than the friggin' presidential election in 2020. What is that? They don't know which end is up. But we've got two schools near one another, like, within walking distance, open for business, for voting? What a waste. That's our money.
Councilwoman--
No cap, no confidence.
Uh, Hills, you made a comment earlier about rescuing East Roswell. Was that area always, not always heard of Roswell, or what did you believe when you said that?
It was unincorporated. And so--
Until when?
20, uh, it was 21 years ago, I believe.
So--
It was right after I moved to, to Roswell. I mean, it was like within months of me, and that was in '02. So right around 2002, um, we took in that, what was the count? We were only, we were a little city then.
Well, that's 40,000 of our residents.
Yes.
Technically, would have lived in, for previously unincorporated north of Fulton County--
It was, it was phases, because what you're referring to is, is the eastern half of East Roswell.
Yes, yes. But what I mean, what I mean by rescuing is there's some ownership. Those are our residents now. So, I mean, I take that very seriously. They're, and I hate saying they, that part of our city is part of our responsibility. But I feel like that group, that body of people, of, of residents of Fulton County had very little representation. I don't know what the folks that were there before becoming part of Roswell felt like their representation was. I don't know, I can't really speak to that. And I wasn't as plugged in at that time either. But, um, I mean, I think it's a huge responsibility for us to make sure that every, every part of Roswell is included and represented and, um, and thought about in, in elections, starting with elections, but the services that the city renders.
Adrian, Delaney, any other thoughts or questions? It's your, it is your floor. How fun is it? You can ask anything you want to. And with your permission, we're gonna invite you again. And we'll invite residents. But I do, I think it is important for the press to have open access, open questions, mind open, and don't, don't just get the mayor's perspective, which by the way, anytime, but the entire deliberative body. I think that's important. Because, I don't know about you guys, I don't see a lot of great things happening on the diocese historically coming out of, like, you know, it's very difficult. That's a very stilted process.
You're saying the council meetings?
Yes. Those are stilted. Those, the dynamics are tough, right? Those are tough dynamics. They are. Like, very hard to hear a conversation. Which is really what you want to know, like, what are you guys really thinking?
You got to see how contentious we are this morning when we discuss topics.
Sarah!
I want to make sure I'm sitting.
It's just a little campfire.
Sit with Mike.
Mike doesn't have a friend, sit with Mike.
No, that's perfect, yes, you face it, yeah.
There's no, there's really no.
There's no--
There's no right or wrong, because we're going all over.
Oh, no, you apologize. We're glad you're here.
All right, you ready for all your questions from the press? They've been waiting for them.
I'm crony, let's go.
Go.
We waited for Sarah for the, the hard ones.
We've just been sipping coffee.
All right, so just, yeah, you're on, you're on the, um, you're on the hot seat, Sarah.
My favorite seat.
Because I can tell you, previous to this, for the last, uh, two hours, the body has been basically speaking against you. the body has been basically speaking against you. And so now you got to defend yourself.
All right. It's normal, all right? Let's do it.
You're on, no. It's kind of been just open Q and A. Like Adrian said, hey, yo-yo, I didn't know that's the plan.
What was?
It's that this is really kind of their show.
Oh, there you go.
So they're, they've been asking us questions.
Awesome.
You'd be surprised, the mayor has not talked.
I'm going to assume you're being facetious, but.
I'm interested in this running thread of talking about the conversations at council meetings and how they can't be stilted and people may not know the origins of those conversations. So is there anything that you'd like to specifically say on that topic for residents to know about the fact that sometimes there are decisions made that they might not know where they're coming from? Sometimes there are these things on the agenda that they'll ask me, hey, do you know the origins of this? Do you have the background? And I don't. So moving forward, is there something that you'd like to change that beyond this type of Q and A?
Oh, I'll tell you, yes. So I'd like to do these with residents, right? But, like, this shows you how powerless I am. Like, truly, I would get rid of the dais tomorrow. Like that fancy dais where the council is on top and the mayor's on council looking down on the people? We set this back during our planning session. It did become one of our initiatives, like literally, like, I think the council at best should be even and the mayor should be even. I'd love to put card tables up front. I'm not joking. With seats like this, that's where I would like us to be during a city council meeting. Like, we did, we'll do some more in East Roswell, they call like, kind of like, it's still formal. It's like, I believe in the sanctity of the deliver body. I believe in honoring the deliver body. That's great. But you guys, you guys deal with this all the time. No, you're politics, right? People get politics and all of a sudden they become above. You know, no, you're a steward. You're an elected representative of your fellow residents, fellow people. That's all you are, right? And you've been given the gut check to go make decisions in what you believe is the best, but to answer your questions, like, a lot of questions? Look, people pay more attention to national politics than they pay attention to state politics. People pay more attention to state politics than they pay attention to local politics. Local politics, right, most times are usually an outbreak, right? It's a brush fire on most issues that people got. And then there's the context of the information that's passed around that. And then all of a sudden, it's thrown into, maybe somebody's been working on the same thing for three years. And they're trying to explain three years of work, or six months of work, or three months of work in two sentences. And people say like, doggone it, why don't you do this? Well, I agree with you, but there's a lot of context that I got to put, like, so context is hard in 2023. Like, in the, you know, there's not great debates where both sides get to say, you have an hour to present your position. You have an hour to present your position. No, you have twenty-three characters to present your position. Pretty bad way to disseminate information. And/or the narrative's already made up. Like, for example, the law does not allow us on zoning applications, right? The law is very clear in the state of Georgia. Once an application's in play, we keep our mouths shut. The only place we can comment on that? All the dais. I don't consider that particularly, I mean, I don't make the law, but I don't think that's always healthy. Because people that probably need to know things on both sides of the equation need to be informed. But the reality is, the only way this body or I can communicate them is through the dais. I don't think that's particularly healthy. I find that very uninforming to people that like, say, look, clearly, this, this is our position on this, so beforehand, like, before you waste your time. Or, don't get all jilted up, we already agree with you. And we can't say that. So it has to play its way out through the formal process. I don't see that as particularly healthy from a democracy perspective.
So I can say, go back to the comments about, is it stilted?
Stilted.
So, because I'd say, I think there are some advantages to the, to the way the zoning process works to really protect, to protect the city and ensure a fair hearing. Separating from zoning discussions is what I'd say, the opportunity that the mayor's creating, I think, I think the mayor and his council are getting better at it. But with the way a council meeting is set up with the dais, it's hard, it doesn't, it's not conducive of back and forth conversation, which is sometimes helpful. And whereas this is obviously the opportunity for more of a back and forth discussion as well as, as well as, I think, I think with the bond merger that we did, it was a great opportunity for a lot of back and forth with the community. So I think, I think it's just looking for more opportunities for more of a back and forth, whereas obviously, the dais is a, is a formal meeting with a lot of, a lot of laws being put into place by, by this body where it's just, it's just not as conducive for a back and forth dialogue, if you will ever know. That'd be my guess. Kind of what I hear you mention, folks kind of stilted.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to talk up there. It is. It's really hard for me. It's like, I'm technically running the meeting. And, and I technically don't have, I don't, I don't get a vote. I'm not, I'm not part of, that's authority, that the, that's where the authority is, not me.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we answer your question? Any other thoughts on that, guys? Sarah, you could be left out of something, I would feel very down.
What was that?
You could be left out.
Do you have a specific example of?
We talked about Gateway.
Well, no, you said that.
We talked about elections.
You're saying the residents were reaching out to you. Are there any specific examples of things that folks weren't following where the origins came from?
I think, okay, there was something that there was a surprise with how popular the voting and the election discussion was moving. And it appeared on, I believe it was a community development agenda? It was in a committee meeting. And people didn't know that it was in the committee meeting. And they had no idea that there even was a discussion happening. And then obviously, with that timeline, I think it was one week later. It was the next day there was a meeting, and then one week later was the special call at city council. So people did not have the time or the understanding that that was even a discussion that was being had until the city council meeting, which was also, as we know, a special call. So there were some people who came to me about that, and they're, I guess, surprised, I guess is the way to characterize.
I guess to respond to that one, so the city of Roswell, the elections meetings simultaneously had our meetings at the same time, I mean, literally the same time for our first meeting as John's Creek. Alpharetta was moving kind of coordinated at the same time we were. But I will say that Roswell had more public meetings to discuss elections than any of our surrounding cities did, with the exception of maybe Milton, because theirs was over an eighteen-month period, and ours was over that very consolidated period. And those were done very quickly because we received response originally from Fulton County saying, this is the initial rate that we're going to give you, and that kind of dropped the gauntlet for us to decide, you know, what are we doing? Because this is a very high amount, we have to be good fiduciary stewards of taxpayer money, and also trying to decide what we're going to do with elections. But I think it was a lot of hurry up on our end, and I think those conversations probably slowed down a little bit based off of, A, we have staff being tasked with, you need to logistically figure out what our options are. And then B, Fulton County responded and said, never mind, we're not going to go with that very high rate. We're going to honor the 2021 rate. So that made it less of a fire drill compared to what it was before, it was starting at that eleven-something amount. That said, I know that there's, I don't know when those conversations will be had. I know there's still our conversations to be had about where we're landing the plan on elections. But I think those three rapid-fire meetings that came back to back to back was because we knew Fulton County gave us a really high amount. We didn't know when Fulton County was going to need a response by, and the surrounding cities, because if we're going to go in with elections with them, we're simultaneously having those discussions. So we kind of have to move in tandem. But I think Roswell, at the same time, was far more public in our process, maybe compared to some of the other cities who had one, if not two, or was, we had at least three very public meetings to discuss that. And we also took public comments during that time as well.
Well, and this, this speaks to what Mayor Wilson said a few minutes ago, in one form or another. We went to great lengths to bring that to committee, and we got crucified for being public. And, and Councilmember Palermo is, is always an advocate of that, always. Let's bring it to council as much as we can, or not, I'm sorry, bring it to committee so that we can educate the public, educate our residents, whoever is interested in hearing what we're doing. So we actually went to great lengths to put that forward so that it could be talked about before it hit the dais. So we're in a damned if you do, damned if you don't. I don't think we had to do that, did we? We could have gone straight to the dais. We had every right to do that within the law. Yet we're doing the right thing. I really don't care, no offense, Delaney, if people called you or not, I really don't care. That's, that's on them. I didn't hear from anybody that wanted to scorch us for, you know, bringing it to committee. And again, I'm not upset with you, it's just, we're in the business of getting things done. And if people want to complain about us over educating, whether it's in a seven-day period, a four-day period, or a three-week process, let them have at it. We're moving on. We're moving forward. We got things to do. So I just find it amazing that, had we, had we gone with the easiest route, we would have been excoriated and we actually overeducated by, by what we had to do by law and still, you know, get feedback. So shame on them, or good for them for vocalizing their opinions. We're moving forward.
I think the concern is, it's more so where did this come from? Because you see all these cities moving simultaneously of, why is John's Creek putting the same night as Roswell to discuss the elections? It was essentially because the county came down and said, this is your dollar amount that you're working with, and all of the cities would be like, what? You know, it's the cartoon eyeballs coming out of your head.
And their committee and council meetings are run kind of in tandem with ours, as I've recalled.
John's Creek, sorry, yeah. So I think that's why we moved pretty much at the same time, is because it was that immediate reaction to hearing this dollar amount, but not knowing at that time when they needed a response from us. I think the conversation has evolved on both ends a lot in the last month since we originally started doing those meetings, to the point that that's probably why people were like, why'd you do three meetings and then we heard nothing from you? Well, it's because at the time, there was a far higher sense of urgency when we thought that it was that eleven-dollar rate before they came down on the rate. And now we're also tasked with waiting for staff to see what they can do. So it's not like we're all just sitting in the wings like, okay, contingency plan in the event that this happens, pull out Plan B and fire with it. No, it's us trying to be as nimble as possible, yet still being responsive to the voters, with hearing their feedback, which we did get plenty of feedback away to the elections, and making sure that we're executing based off of not only what the public wants, but making sure that we're being responsible with our dollars. Well, to you. You said you were saving the hard ones for me.
I mean, you just knocked it out of the park. I wish, I wish I spoke as eloquently as you. It was well said.
I appreciate it.
Seriously.
I don't know how long that was. I'm, one, one cup of coffee in this morning, we'll see how it's going.
No, I mean, you answered the question. You brought some of the diverging pieces into the equation, and you just answered, like, hey, at that time, this is what we knew.
Right.
That changed. And you kind of heard me talk about some of the backdrop of, with the other cities, like, what else is changing with them? We're moving ahead, we're moving ahead, but we're not moving ahead as a group, which was kind of the original premise, like, as a group. That was the ideal. And that changed. And we weren't the originator of that change. We're kind of reacting to the original problem, like, uh-oh, we got a problem. To your point, it was eleven dollars a head. Uh-oh, that's a problem. But it did open up the door for an honest conversation that I think needs to take place. So in your absence, I was asking all the council, like, this is my position, you guys are voting on us, what's your position?
On which way?
On elections.
Oh, yeah.
And so, do you want me to tell you what my position was?
Go for it.
I say, I'm suggesting that we commit to doing municipal elections in 2025, and that we commit our full resources and make a commitment to go ahead and do that. That we have municipal elections in city of Roswell in 2025. In 2023, I'm scared to death, and I would not recommend going ahead in 2023. That's my perspective.
That's fair. I mean, my perspective on the elections, I've been fairly consistent throughout the line of questioning over the last three public meetings, which is, I think there are a lot of items that go into properly executing an election. And I want that to be done in a way that's not only financially responsible, but also done in a way that does undermine people's faith in their own elections, especially when executed by the local government. To the mayor's point, I think 2025 is more than enough time to build that plane along with the surrounding cities in North Fulton and target flying it together. I worry that we are five, and if people think of November as being the election, there's a lot more that goes into the elections process with qualifying starting in August. An absentee ballot request also start in August. So you're really five months, less than five months out from today for those elections. Given what the mayor just said, five months is not a lot of time for a city of a hundred thousand, much less in coordination with another city of a hundred thousand and another city of eighty thousand.
Seventy-five, sixty-eight.
Yeah, seventy-five thousand.
Forty-one.
To properly coordinate logistically and hire the people that we need and be able to execute an election that I think people will not only be proud of, but will have faith in. So if we look at 2025, which I know that John's Creek in committee, so it hasn't gone to the dais yet, John's Creek in committee just said they're targeting 2025, moving in coordination with that same timeline as well, and I know Alpharetta has not voted yet. If we can target 2025 together, I think that we can build the plane, then fly it, as opposed to trying to build it while we fly it. Because if we're going to do it, I think we need to do it right, especially given that's a very large, large responsibility is executing an election. But that's me.
Everybody else did keep their personal stance on this, well.
I realize it's probably diverse.
I don't think so.
No, just me.
Oh, actually weird. If it's any consolation, I have topics where it's usually diverse.
I've been accused of not being diverse, just for the record.
Look at you standing on your own now.
You two are the two that agree on the job.
What was that?
You two are the two that agree on the job.
Really?
Well, I'm ready to go.
I know you.
I know that Milton brought this proposition to you all, but was this anything that you had discussed last year as a pop, like, you know, it would be great if Roswell ran its own election?
Yes. In fact, after the four of us newest council members were elected, we were meeting before we were sworn in, and it hit our top, I don't know how many, it was forty-eight.
And I just want to add in that during Lori Henry's tenure, it was explored as well.
I met with Lori Henry, and she invited me to the North Fulton Municipal Association meetings. So I was already involved as a resident.
I wasn't there.
I understand, interestingly enough, I did, I gave a speech the day after we ran, after myself, Lee, Will, and Peter got elected. And political organization, he did the speech, and I talked about elections. And, what a hotbed night. Like, and I'm not saying this was like, I was surprised, like, I didn't even know what I was, I was just talking about elections. I get standing, standing ovation just for talking about elections, not that I have any great ideals at the particular time. And so we came in and started deliberating as a body in November and December of 2021, when our policy initiatives were being, to answer your question, we talked about elections. We talked about elections and we said, do we prioritize this? And our answer was, no, we're prioritizing economic redevelopment. We're prioritizing the, the public safety. We're going to prioritize the organization, the execution of the organization. Do we want to do elections? Yes. But we made a deliberative decision in November and December as a body, before we came into office together. We want to tackle this, but let's get these other things done first. And you kind of heard Peter say that. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a discussion, but frankly, with everything that we did in 2022, it took a backseat. And when this came up, when Sarah brought it up, when the eleven-dollar a head issue came up, it's like Fulton County, what we were hearing from Fulton County through back channels was, we don't want to do the election. We don't want to do the municipal election. And so it was kind of like, and Milton had already been working on it, so they said, look, God, they may want to do it. It's kind of like getting forced on us, not through the public channel, but behind the private channel. So it moved us into action pretty quick, like, we got a problem. And then, as Sarah mentioned, and then it changed. I guess it got public, and Fulton County changed its position, and all of a sudden, oh, we'll be more economically relevant. To Mike's position though, it was like, you guys still got a position? You guys took away an early voting precinct, which is a big deal for Roswell, particularly when there's going to be fifteen or twenty thousand people voting.
What else you got?
I've been asking questions.
Asking questions not related to elections.
I'll let Sarah ask your question.
Elections, and we've talked about it for a while. Talking briefly about the bonds, we talked about the concentration bond, those personally discussed. I know there was a bond implementation discussion recently that got canceled. So I was just curious if there are any updates on the other bonds that you have.
Well, where'd Peter go?
He's on a phone call up front.
Yes. So you heard Jeff kind of address it, because the parks and recs piece is complicated? It's the biggest piece at a hundred and seven point six million? What's more difficult is public safety and parking and recs. And you say, why? That sounds simpler. Because it's real estate involved, and it's tied into how to go. And so any decision that we make with respect to the parking garage or to the public safety pieces, respect to where the new nine-one-one public safety center is, or where the fire stations are, those right now are directly tied to our economic development plan, real estate acquisition. And so they should sound easier, but they're more complicated. Because, again, don't want to make a misstep on buying the wrong piece of property or putting on the wrong piece of property and not fitting into the overall kind of master plan. So the reason you're not hearing updates on that is because they're being worked on on real estate behind the scenes, and we are not ready to release those, be premature.
Our police department and fire department are like chomping at the bit.
Oh, those guys.
They are like the horses at the Kentucky Derby waiting for the gate to open. I mean, they're, they're ready.
And just, just to dovetail on that, they were with us when we were in Auburn, for the retreat. I mean, one of the residents that we selected that, they just finished their thirty-two million dollar public safety facility. So we were able to tour that. And basically, I think the most valuable part of that is learning from what they say, learn from our mistakes. And they shared those things, and not that they're mistakes, but things that perhaps could have been thought through differently. And now that they're in, they basically have said, you know what? When you're doing your facility, consider this, consider X, Y, and Z, because these are things that we didn't necessarily think through all the way. So that's, I, I think that's a tremendous benefit for us.
Yep.
Knowing that there are real estate facilities, and those are not available for public release at the moment, is there any sort of rough timeline, and this information could be publicly available, or do you not have a timeline?
Is there a timeline? And could it be available?
Well, honestly, we're already working on, so even though the real estate components aren't publicly consumable at this time, we are having the initial meetings to discuss what the needs are, and what kind of real estate we're targeting. Obviously, those are non-forum, non-public meetings, because we don't want to create over, over demand for specific property, like, oh, well, you're looking for a property that has, you know, X, Y, and Z components. If I got a deal for you, we don't want to put that out to the market at this time. But it's not to say that we're putting the smooth button on it either, because to Lee's point, they are chomping at the bit. We have the very detailed list, especially in regards to the fire stations, as to these are the components that we're going to need, and those are the conversations that are evolving over time. But I think once we're able to finalize the details on the real estate acquisitions and the purchases themselves, that's when we can bring the full picture forward. So it's not to say that, like, oh, those are the more complicated ones, and so we're putting them off. No, we're working on them actively, and details will be forthcoming.
And I will tell you, as we get, we did our first iteration of the economic development plan last year. We are now going to kind of a second iteration, which is a much more complex strategy, which we are in the process of developing right now. And I share that with you is, that changes some of the particular com, components of acquisition property. And it also has some bigger potential pieces, interpretation of potential development, that have a higher factor of, you can't release the information because there's other people involved.
In redevelopment, we're developing, the, I can't think of the name of the development, Alfreda Heinz.
The Southern Post project.
Yes. Can you share any insight on that? It seemed like nothing was happening for so long, and now, all of a sudden, you're seeing, you know, structures in progress. What's been going on with that development? Can you share?
Well, the, I'd love to say it's because of the great city council, and they're, when they, the process, it has a lot to do with the market. It's, it's moving forward aggressively, and it'll be ready for primetime opening spring of 2024. That's the shortage. I think, you know, it's really easy to say, hey, we can take credit, start happening when we got in office. There's a lot of pieces in that equation.
Well, I mean, even in the last few months, it just seems like there's, it just seems so slow. And then all of a sudden, there just seems to be a lot of progress going on.
Positive market forces. I, I don't want to say, hey, I don't want to say Lee, Lee and Sarah and Christine and Will and Mike and Peter, but they deserve credit, they're awesome. Or the organization all of a sudden got super squared away. Positive market forces are a part of this market. But we're pleased that it's moving forward. Doesn't it sound too cute, does it? Excuse me? Yeah. Doesn't it sound too cute? I mean, it's easy for politicians to say, look, look what's happened since we got in office. Ooh, ooh, that's a good idea.
No, I mean, I don't even, I don't even want to go back that far. I just didn't know if you could share any insight. Of course, I can talk to the developer as well, but I'm thinking that he was a city, know what's happening over there. And it just, as I said, it just seemed to be very slow moving, and then now it seems to.
I think the reality for them, Armando Hoffler was waiting, that's the developer, Armando Hoffler was waiting on some components to change in the macroeconomy, especially they were waiting for some of the development costs to come down. And then so it began to stabilize and look like it was leveling off. That helped them. I think once there was clarity, I think, from standpoint, which there was, but the instrumentation internally of what they can do, what they can't do, that being, that being clear. But I really do mean, I think market forces were the strongest component for Armando Hoffler to say, we're in a position, not only financially, from a leverage perspective, but from the standpoint of, we stabilize, we see stabilization of costs, so we can move forward. There are a lot of pieces to that equation, and going back through that, like a lot of developments, like, we're pushing behind this, like, what's happening with this? What's happening with that? And truly, some of them are in the hands of the private marketplace, like, hey, are we causing a disturbance? You know, is somebody waiting on L D P N us? Is there an issue inside the city? And sometimes, it's just literally the issue in the hands of the developer, and it probably is market force driven. We're trying to finalize their capital position, and their leverage position. Truly, in the last thirty-six months, right, and has been cost issues. So a lot of people saw a thirty-five, forty percent increase in cost, and they got, whoa, that's not what I had to perform with the project. So all of a sudden, the project's on an indefinite hold until there's a leveling off or an understanding that they can get the right return on investment.
Also, the DDA, I mean, that's basically a DDA project as well, so throw that into the mix.
I mean, from an economic, you kind of heard, like, you touched the big macro goals. So one other thing, Adrian, that we have been working on is alignment, alignment of our own. Like, what do you want? Like, I don't say, like, I don't say what I want, I say, what do you want, people? You're elected people, what do you want? Get clarity. So I have financial clarity. Once you get clarity, and there's alignment on that, okay, now our job is to go do the same thing with all of the organization, the organization itself, and then all of the partner organizations. Like, it doesn't make sense if the elected body, the representatives of the people are saying one thing, and then there's this organization, partner organization says this, and this partner organization says this, and this partner organization, and they're not even elected, right? But they're partner organizations, and they're saying, but we're gonna do that. So why don't the people, as represented by the city council, say that? That's, that's the alignment. So part of this, you're probably saying, what does that have to do with anything? Is creating a, one, an overall vision, strategic alignment, and then getting that strategic alignment to be executed throughout the city. And that's been a big part of this, one of the overall pieces to the city, because there's been a lot of disparate activity that has, in my view, helped to paralyze the city. And so, I think it's very important is to get, hey, the people are speaking, there's city council people. You're not elected, why are you thwarting the will of the elected body? That happens. More than I think should happen. What was your point, man?
Southern Post.
Southern Post. But, yeah, I think we're tickled to death, speaking for me, I'm tickled that Southern Post is moving along, and should be ready for primetime spring, late spring of 2024.
I have a question about the Alfreda Heinz development. I know that Roswell Roswell Authority is working on it, and they recently informed our orders that they are talking to the city about the project, gap funding for their application, about a four million dollar ask, and they said that the city was enthusiastic, was trying to figure out what that help could look like, and I really want any updates for that.
Um, I'll speak to that, if you're good with that, mayor. So the application for the, oh my gosh, four percent loan is due in early May. So by the end of this month, we have to have a letter from the city, from the mayor, and all of us, making a commitment, a financial commitment. So we're looking at several different ways of going about funding that. We have a long, long list of things we'd like to pay for, purchase, buy whatever in the city handled. And so, this one is going to incorporate the Section 108 loan, and potential purchase of some of the Housing Authority property. And we're waiting on some appraisals right now, but I'm hoping, like, any minute, but maybe next week. So we've got the ball rolling on that with a commitment, and we're happy with, with what we are hearing and seeing from Penrose. And they've been excited to work with us. I find this to be a really unfortunate situation to be in, that a federal agency has put a, put their own lack of follow-through on the shoulders of a municipality. But as, as an elected person and as a resident, I think it's our responsibility to take care of the residents that live there. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Mr. Michael Dowda, who had been at one of our, one or two of our council meetings, recently passed away last week. Yes, and really unfortunate. He, he had some, he, he had a lot of, a lot of things going on, as far as disabilities and otherwise. So my heart goes out for him and his family, I don't know even how much is connected anymore. But anyway, so very concerning. I mean, I'm bringing that up because it's important as a resident, to have our residents looked after. And so, the, the outcome of the development will be much better living circumstances for the residents there. All of the ones, all of the residents who have been relocated, their voucher is still good to come back. They'll have the first right of refusal to come back. If indeed, a purchase of a piece of property, or multiple pieces of property occurs with the city owning the residential property over there, that we will not be outing anyone. We will most likely go through an attrition process, and then make some decisions. The Housing Authority-owned or HUD-owned properties, we can't, we can't do anything with that just yet anyway. And there has to be a, because it's locked up with HUD, but there has to be a process of, a place for us to put people if we were to relocate anyone from a property. So we're not quite to that point yet, but we're, we're investigating a lot of different avenues, and we feel pretty good about where we are, as does our board for the Housing Authority in Roswell, and the developer. So it's, it's looking very promising. I think that's going to be about a two-year, maybe a little bit more, process on that. Probably won't break ground until next year, assuming everything goes through. They put in the application in, I believe, May third. Don't hold me to that exact, but right in there. And then probably won't know anything until October, November timeframe. They won't get word back until then. So that puts us into next year, but they're queuing it up. And that was a forty, forty-unit building, and this will be a one hundred and one unit. They're, they're teetering, because those are all one-bedroom units, and they were teetering with possibly making one or two of them two-bedroom. So there's a little bit of gray in there, but it's, the, the boundaries, so to speak, are pretty much locked in. So I'm, I'm very proud of the work that's been done. We've had support from the council, which is great, because that's not always the case. And I don't want to speak for anybody, but I do think it's a really unfortunate situation that we're in, and we're gonna do what's right, our residents.
To add to that, I think it's disappointing that it got to the conditions that it was in over, I'll say, the last decade, if not more. And it got to the point that it did, but I see this as an exciting opportunity to not only be able to provide a much higher standard of living.
Wraparound services.
More wraparound services, better support for these residents, many long-time residents, while increasing the number of units. So to me, that's the, the highlight of the opportunity in that scenario.
I've got a request from both of the news outlets. This is, this is not really anything that we've talked about to this point, but several of us have been on the job for about fifteen months now, give or take, wherever you want to start that, that official start date. And some others, like Mike and Christine, have been here much longer. From my personal standpoint, I know I've uncovered many, many great stories here in Roswell through residents, and just getting to know what they're doing, what's important to them, what makes them click. Because as the mayor has, has already said, you know, what's important to them, they're gonna let us know. And they're gonna be the front, front runners, and we're beating the doors around. We gotta get on top of this, we gotta do this right, whatever that may be. Whether it be gateway, whether it be voting, or really and truly, whether it be something in the parks and rec programs. And that's where I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of feedback. My request is, I have gotten to know tons of people that are doing great things here in the community that never get any kind of light. And if you guys are just looking for a story, a filler, let us know. We, we all can turn you into great residents here, there, doing great things. Whether it be in a volunteer role, whether it be in a, a passion project. I mean, we have tons and tons of stuff we can reach for. A perfect example is one of the Recreation Commission individuals runs an under-twenty-three soccer team through the Parks and Rec. And that is just to keep that, that age bracket, that demographic out of trouble. It is low-motivated income households. He is the single-handedly running that entire program. He's making a generation of change in these good parks. He needs, he needs publicity. Those are the type of things.
And he's not asking for it, is he?
He's not.
What's his name?
Josegan Zons.
Well, I know that I'm always interested in those kinds of stories, and all stories. So please.
Yep.
It's not, I may not get in touch and say, you know, is there a story that, you know, you want me to tell? But I'm always welcome. Councilwoman Hall has, you know, shared, you know, hey, this new business, you know, that opened, and other stories have come to me through people in other cities, you know, just.
Like the Ukraine life this past year.
Right.
Perfect example.
Right, right. So please, you know, as far as I'm concerned, please let me know.
Well, I don't know if this is a story or not, but I think, I really think it's interesting, and that is just me. I think it's really interesting that a deliberative body in 2023 would say, quote unquote, to a possible press, come in, come in, come on in, let's talk. What do you want to know? Think about that. I think that's an interesting story. Now, maybe somebody else does, and maybe I'm being, I'm like, I'm telling, I mean, that's like, hey, this, everybody talks about transparency, I don't hate that word. Like, really, like, this body is saying, hey, what do you want to know? What are your questions of us? What do you, like, we're not trying to hide, we're trying to engage. And I think that's interesting. And you've probably seen, you've seen this, you saw this retreat, you saw the, you see the, how the body works and how it deliberates. You get a little taste of it, like, it's a pretty interesting group of people, they're pretty dynamic, and are serious and intentional about, hey, they don't want to, this body does not come in and say, you know what? Because they have a plan, and they form that plan, and they continue to form plans. And they're serious about getting the work done. I think that's not interesting. Like, how many think about this? Do you think tomorrow that Alfreda's gonna say, not smacking Alfreda, because Alfreda's awesome, do you think Jim's gonna say, come on in, we're gonna have a public meeting, the public's invited, and you guys come in and ask us what you want? I don't think they're gonna do that. I don't mean that as a knock on them, but I don't think that they're, because you can see there's a lot of debate, a lot, all the time.
Let's go to Oxford.
Go to Oxford?
You gotta give me a minute to.
Well, I had, I wanted to say, on, on your, your point about the sort of human interest stories is to, to mirror, we are always looking for stories like that, and of course, we try to interact with communities in ways that may not necessarily. And I think it's important to recognize that you're also residents, and you can come to us with story ideas, with people's sources that you might want us to speak to, not as a city council member, but as a resident. That is allowed, I know our relationship seems very different than that, but I can accept a pitch from anyone. And I am looking for stories like that, always, because that is, you know, the fact of the community. So thank you for sharing that. And that does, to flip the script a little, I'm curious to know if there are any, with Apple Media specifically, if, if you were to say, but I don't want to put that on them. But if there are any, I guess you could call it news gaps, or things that you wish that you were seeing more coverage of, human interest is a good example of that, but anything in particular that you just, you thought of, and like, oh, I wish I was seeing that more in the paper, and I feel like it's just not there.
You want to hear a joke? I can't tell you, Peter's told me recently, and probably Sarah and I haven't had this conversation, but I can tell you, the council and other mayors make fun of me by the hostility, as they perceive it, not me, that Apple Media treats Roswell and me in the press. They think it's funny, like, the other mayors, we're talking about this, or they, they like, oh my God, I would never be the mayor of Roswell. Don't, don't do this, because I'm not talking to you. I would never be the mayor of Roswell. And like, what, what has happened got in for you? Like, I don't know what has gotten in for me, I don't know, they're like Roswell, I don't know, maybe they were like me, I don't know, I have no idea, I have no clue. The other mayors make fun of it. My council makes fun of it, my council, our council makes fun of it, like, what is that gap about? I got no clue, I have no clue. There's a hostility as other people perceive it. Jamie and I don't talk about it much, because we get lots of hostility, it's like, can't control it, can't influence, stay focused on what you can do, try to do the right thing, keep God in the middle of it, with the God, and try to do the right thing. And so, like, a lot of them is like, hey, because I believe in the power and the rights of the press, and will, and, and fought for this. I believe in it. So if the press sees me as a bad entity or hostile entity, so be it. I don't spend like that. But I think it's funny that my colleagues say, why does Apple Media not like you? Why do they keep writing bad stories? I go, and about Roswell, I don't know, I have no clue.
What could you provide an example of, when you're speaking, and what you perceive as hostile?
Remember the veteran that came up to the dais at that city council meeting?
Mr. Dowda.
Mr. Dowda.
That, that would be a good example, I think, because that was a one sided argument, that was a one sided story.
Three articles written on that. I have a milk crate for fifteen months with all of Apple Media, Alfreda Roswell newspapers that were delivered to my house. And now they're marked, the sticky notes, I have fourteen or fifteen months of them, one after another, after another, after another.
What?
It's a spin. So with the Mr., with the Mr. Dowda, he had been offered a two bedroom apartment unit in Roswell. And he came to the dais and raised almighty, which he has a right to do, and said that he was being mistreated, he was being, I don't know if he used the word discriminated against, but I was assuming it was about his age. And that he was, he was being kicked out of his apartment. He had already been offered three times a two bed, an upgrade, which is HUD illegal for a single person to move into a two bedroom. And the board made his decision to give him, and with the executive director, to give him a two bedroom. Three times they offered that. And that news story blew up, that he would have been mistreated and he hadn't been offered anything and he was getting put on the street. And then right after that, he was offered it again. And then he got some folks in the, in the Housing Authority to validate his story, which was incorrect. None of that was vetted. And guess what? He was moved into a two bedroom apartment, a two bedroom unit. That was never talked about in three different publications.
Funny, just to the whole point of the Roswell Housing Authority, so, you weren't here. For an, over a decade, the city of Roswell, and by the way, there's separate agencies, so it's the Red City of Roswell and City of Roswell Housing Authority. And cities make decisions, agree, housing authorities are done, it's complicated, but falls under the purview of the city to create it. But once it's created, it's a federal agency, it's not a city agency. But cities create it for their own reasons. And that's what happens. And usually cities are involved tangentially in the communication process. But I will tell you that in the last decade, there was no communication from the city of Roswell at the quote unquote staff level or the elected official level to the housing authority. Despite the bidding of the housing authority to the city of Roswell, talk about a story. Like, there's something real stories in the city, like you really peek underneath the cloth, like, I can say as a resident, like, that's outrageous. So we got in and said, hey, that ain't right. And so we established a relationship and said, and then we got in and said, oh my God, you got a building that could collapse. And there's people living in it, what have you done about it? And they said, well, funny story, previous electives from far back were involved in the development, it bankrupted us. Oh, maybe there were local people involved in it, story, story, there were local people involved in it and they bankrupted essentially the housing authority? Story, story. Oh, and you don't have the finances to actually even take care of your existing building because you basically got bankrupted? There's a real story there. But instead the story got played is, oh, we come in, actually this government's opened up the channels, condemned a building that's in danger of falling and killing people. And all of a sudden, we're the bad guys and go, okay, that's guy you're going to blame? I don't know, I'm going to keep doing the right thing regardless of what you say. Regardless of like, and Michael Dowda comes up because he's responding to the press story and saying, why are you kicking us out? We're kicking you out because your buildings don't fall. And there are a lot of ramifications to that that we have to figure out. And by the way, aren't technically, aren't responsible to figure out this to the housing authorities, but we're getting involved, trying to help out because we understand there's a human need, regardless of whether they're Roswell residents or not, whether they've become Roswell residents, we understand there's a human need. We get involved and we get hammering, 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 contest. Michael Dowda comes, why are you kicking me out? That's what the press, that's what the press were going. Right? And Michael Dowda, to your point, you can't, you're being respectful because you don't even comment on there's some other pieces there to that equation, which should have been vetted, right? So.
Mayor Wilson and council member Hall and I were the first people who've ever shown up to one of their board meetings at Roswell Housing Authority. That was either January or February of last year.
January.
That's never happened before. And I've continued to go, not every single one, but it's, it's ludicrous. Like, this is a huge story.
And we, I'm trying to keep my message because I don't, we don't, we look at it and just say, move on, move on. If, whatever it's going to be is going to be. That's, I can't.
Right.
I'm not trying to inform that or change it. But I think you hear Lee's like, well, there's a lot of stories there. Why aren't those stories actually being exculpated and talked about and discussed? And where the chips might fall, I mean, if they fall on me and I'm responsible, I gotta own it, right? They fall on Peter and he's responsible, he's gotta own it. It doesn't seem a lot of times that's actually the case. It seems like the chips were somewhere else, but by the way, I'm going to put the chips up, you Peter. Why? Well, I don't know why, but you happen to be here.
I think from the residents' perspective, they don't, they might not necessarily differentiate between the housing authority and the city of Roswell.
Agreed.
And so they just think, this is what's, this is my experience through this, you know, place where I live, that the city owns. And I spent a few hours the day after that meeting over there and, you know, they were talking about flooding, you know, repeat flooding, you know, in apartments and, you know, just showing, you know, structures, structured problems, you know, which is the reason why it was condemned. And things that they have been experiencing for a long time. And so, you know, if you're a senior citizen and you've been living there for twenty years and you're not limited income, you know, that's their experience. I understand you're talking about media, media spin, but there's also, you know, the voice of the resident and with their experience.
A number of those residents that have been interviewed didn't give you the whole truth. And had been offered to be relocated on campus, either in that building or in another building. And I've got a March sitting in my garage right there.
Well, I want to, I want to say something because I don't necessarily know specifically.
Sure.
You know, but I do know that it did come up that each of them had, that I talked to, they had something, some reason why they didn't want to go to where they were.
So they refused, they refused the offer to relocate.
We can use whatever word, but yes, I mean.
But they didn't give you that in the interview. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, you took, took him verbatim, which I understand that, but it's invalid, it's an untruth of what actually was going on.
Well, and to me, the real story there, here's a real story. The housing authority, the city of Roswell, previous to us, kept saying, hands off, we're not going to help you, we're not going to help you. Now, like you said, which we got in and said, well, we own this whether we own it or not, right?
Yeah.
And it's our responsibility, whether we want to accept it or not, to help solve the problems. That was our perspective, like, we don't care whether or not this is ours or not, this is in Roswell, forget the perception issues, we got to solve the problem, okay? And to me, like, when we started getting into it, we said, oh my God, the housing authority has no money. Why doesn't the housing authority have money? There are vehicles to create money through development programs. Oh my God, go back and look at the previous development, done through the council, elective and changing the zoning code for a particular developer involved in Roswell. You guys haven't got a story on this? Along with the national development that bankrupted the Roswell Housing Authority. So the Roswell Housing Authority, guess what? Now, in real terms, to go back to why residents need to take care, because it's a federal program. Because the housing authority, four volunteers, doesn't have the finances because of the deal that was cut by the previous director and the council and the mayor, cutting a deal that was one sided that bankrupted the housing authority. So there's not ongoing structure or financial feasibility to pay for the damn thing. And so now people who need or are desperate, who have no resources, who are waiting on, who are part of the housing authority program. The, the program itself doesn't have the financial or the producer ability to do it. Because if you peel back the onion, elective officials were involved and changed the zoning code to get a development deal done that benefited a local developer and a national developer and the financial structure that, you know, bankrupted the housing authority. Now, that's a story.
Mayor's being kind by not using the word, it was a crime.
Well, and the.
So to me, that's a.
You said, like, you, you said an elected official or a, a senior official?
Well, I'm saying that the elected officials changed a zoning code.
Elected officials.
Right? The elected officials changed a zoning code in coordination with a development project that got done for the city, i.e. for the housing authority. This was, there's a story there.
What year was that?
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
And be clear, almost.
For what, for what project?
Almost bankrupted, they did not.
Veranda.
For, for what project?
Veranda. And all of the, all of the forty residents, well, forty plus, the forty units could have been moved into that building. It's also a senior.
The building that, Veranda's the building that's right there.
Go look at the construct of that.
Like this, what we're dealing with now could have been handled then in a much more humane manner.
Well, you have a fiduciary responsibility, you have a fiduciary responsibility, even if you have leverage. So it doesn't, I'm going to be very clear about the wording. It may not be illegal, but it may be damn not legal. Like, you have a fiduciary responsibility to treat the other partner, whether you have the leverage or not, particularly in this case, in an equitable manner so that you do not basically bankrupt the other, the other party. I don't think that most people understood what you're hoping to do, right? So maybe they're just damn ignorant, maybe they're just damn stupid. But the deal that this city cut and helped a developer cut for a brief, in the housing authority, in the Veranda, was a un, listen, that may not be illegal, it was unethical.
To say the least.
Because it bankrupted the housing authority. Will, you say almost?
Almost.
Okay, let me say, be clear, well, you don't have enough money to upkeep your building. And the building gets disrepair, that you have to condemn the building? Whatever terminology you want to use for that, that's the situation that we thought ourselves in. And we came in and said, literally, oh my God, this building could collapse at any moment in time, just forty people dead here. They could die on our watch. That's crazy. That's the very first we did. So you answered the question about the stories. You guys did stories on Michael Dowda coming to the stage talking about why I'm being kicked out, without any grasp or understanding of the real story behind the scenes. Where there is real press, real, real pop, like, damn, do a story on that.
And why not inform us about that before now or at that time? I mean, that's really what you're saying.
I think, I did actually have a conversation with Apple Media about that. I did have a conversation with Apple Media, pretty much what I'm saying is like that.
I mean, I have no way to clarify.
Of course you don't, no, no, but I'm saying, Adrian's asking a good question. The other thing is, is because I'm investing in trying to do the right thing by being the leadership of the city. And so my job is not to, I'm not trying to navigate the press. I'm not trying to get good stories or bad stories. That's not my job. Maybe it's a sophisticated, smart person in the elected office to do that today, but my job is to make decisions, get it, get to keep the strategy going, keep us aligned on the strategy and keep us moving forward and executing. There are so many stories, to your point, that I guess, I'm not in the press business, and I'm not trying to be in the press business. Maybe I shouldn't be. Because I really believe, like, there's a lot of things, like, well, that's not, we talk about, like, where you're going to spend your time and your resources. And I really like, I really believe, like, God's in the middle of this, trust God, it'll work itself out one way or the other. But yeah, we got, Delaney, Adrian, there's a lot of stories of abuse in this city historically that where we have, we have done, the cities, the people have not been treated right. And I think that's one of the reasons people are always so sensitive, like, there's a real huge level of distrust with elective officials, like, are you screwing me? No, I may not do something you agree, but I promise you I'm not going to screw you. Yeah, I'm not going to screw you. I may not do something, you, you may disagree with me, but I'm not going to screw you. I'm not going to do something unethical. It's not going to be illegal, it's not going to be unethical, it's not going to be immoral. They may not, they may hate me for it, because you disagree with it, but it's not going to be one of those three. And that's one of the things I think is, there's like, raise the level of transparency. I keep hearing that word, it drives me crazy.
You're the one saying it.
Illumination, illumination, it's like, yes.
I probably disagree a little bit slightly with my views on how the press and elected officials should sit. And this is also because I've been here for a whopping three months, so I haven't had to bridge the gaps to say someone like Christine, who's been on council much longer, or council member Flair, who had to step out. They have far more sense of experience. I, I like a healthy amount of distrust in the sense that you, it makes you ask questions, right? So if we're the ones who, beyond what Will's talking about, and I think council member Mortland's talking about, I think that's right, that there are members of our community who do a lot, that don't get the same publicity that we do, because we sit on a dais every other week and you see us. But there are people who are doing just as much service, if not more, to their community through helping out. That said, beyond that, I, I'm of the frame of mind that if you have a story and you want specific questions answered, knock yourself out coming to ask us those questions. But I'm not, I'm not here for pitching stories or spin cycles or anything like that. Not saying that that's what they're saying either. But I like the, I like the third party observer, that's just kind of how I operate. But I will also say that, that was my undergraduate degree was in journalism. So I originally went into this thinking I was going to be on the press side. I took a very roundabout way through communications. And that's probably why I might make some people uncomfortable with how much information I share or I talk about. It's like, I just talk, to the point that it's, I'm doing it now. But my point being is, I, I do like the, I like the, I like the, not cynicism even, or negativity, but I, I like the questioning.
Well, it's a check to power.
Yeah.
A historical.
It is a check to power. And that's, I think we need to be checked. I'm not saying us as our individual group, but I think elected officials inherently need to be checked and that's the role that the press serves.
Amen, sister. That's what we're saying, there is a, the role, the role of the press, like, it's like everything else, it's vacillating, like, there's times where the press has been incredibly, like, if you look at the founding, right, the press was very parochial and very partisan. Like, people understand it, like, it took sides. And there's times where the press became incredibly objective, kind of, got very, you took sides, got very objective, it's like, but the power of the press is there in the constitution for a reason. It's a check to power. And to your point, I guess, it's like, I'm not the press. I get a little role of the elected official, the mayor, and this kept me up, and I get my job to do. And I guess, you know, would I love to have a great press and, of course, or would I love to have press, like, hey, dig deep on the story. We discovered this, what's your perspective on this? Yes, and that's just local, we're not that important, you know? So I guess that's why I don't get that invested in, because I kept saying, really, I think the press should be an objective, neutral power, the force, check to power all day long, right? And that's why I like open questions, like, really, I'm open question, I'm not looking for good press, I'm looking for bad press. I'm just looking for information to flow. And, but I think to Lee's point is, sometimes a story gets put, like, well, wait, we just threw a surface shop there? But I'm not, I don't have the resources. I got a lot of stuff going, like, hey, Adrian, hey, Delaney, let me tell you the real side. Now, I did happen to do that with Jamie, like, hey, Jamie, there's a much deeper story here.
Well, the board president did too, on every single one of them.
Yes, there's a much deeper story here. There's a real story that's of concern to me as a resident and as a mayor, like, this city and these people, in my opinion, that process, there was abuse. It's what it felt like to me, it's maybe I'm wrong. And for whatever reason, it's like, no, that story got checked. Okay, that's fine. It's kind of what it felt like. Well, we're going to keep hammering you, even though you guys are going to be doing something about it, we're going to keep hammering you. Okay. I mean, what am I going to do? Hey, stop hammering me.
I want to make a point about, not you specifically or you guys specifically, but just the topic of what we're talking about, the press. If, if we do a story and it involves a person, like, for example, I did a story that involved an elected official in another city. And that person did not want to, did not return my call. And I did talk to his attorney off the record, but did, did not want to talk on the record. And, you know, wrote the story based on the information I had, I had information from meetings and things like that. And so the, so there wasn't an opportunity to talk to him to get any nuances or any, you know, personal perspective of how he felt. And so now I gave emails from people feeling like he was slighted. And if there's, if I give you an opportunity to, if I try to reach you and I give you an opportunity to talk to me. an opportunity to talk to me, and you don't talk to me, or you send me a statement, I know with Mayor Henry, it was towards the end of her term when she started talking me on the phone. She would not talk to me, she would send me, or through her office, she would send me statements. So, I had to shape everything around her statements and meetings. So, you know, there's, if there's no, if there's no engagement, it's, it's hard. And I know, I don't think I just speak for myself, but I know for me, it is very important to, you know, to have communication and, you know, get a greater understanding, you know, through actual human direct contact.
You could probably say, with, I hope everybody's permission, that the door, I'm trying to make sure this door stays open, regardless, like, it's funny, Julie said, like, I just hear you American comment, and they comment, and duh-duh-duh, but it's not me, right, it's all of us. Like, you can see, it's a very, this is a team of people that are responsible for policy. And as you probably tell, you've been in the room, I don't do anything that I don't have permission for. I may try to be driving somebody with permission, right? I may be trying to guide it, but ultimately, they're gonna say, no, 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 we disagree, we're not doing that, you're wrong. Because that's, that is the elected office, that's the elected representative of the people. But, I mean, our job is not to shape a story, our job is to try and executive provide access and give you engagement and as much, and as transparent as we possibly could be about any of our subjects. And there are some subjects, like, and I would appreciate, this is what I would appreciate, if you think that I'm being dishonest, disingenuous, shaping your story, sending you down the long way, telling you something that's true, I wish you'd tell me that. Because I can tell you, that's not the desire of Ted. And I, I'm not asking to shape your story, but if you think I'm being dishonest with you, or disingenuous, tell me.
I do wanna comment on that concept of shaping stories, I wanna make sure that it's clear, especially because this is a public meeting, that, the way that the press functions, and I'm gonna speak for Appen here, but I know this is true, AJC as well, it is not to shape a story, is not to, to make a story fit into an existing shape, it is simply to report the story and the information that we have as it is. And that is, if anyone ever has theories about the methodology of the press and the way that it works out, that is something that I know Appen is trying to be as transparent as possible about, so that it doesn't seem like there's mysteries afoot, and there's, I heard you use the word spin earlier, that's not a thing that journalists do, that's not a thing that we're doing, spin.
That's hilarious.
Perhaps there is an example of poor quality journalism, however, I know for a fact that the reporters at Appen, I know the reporters at AJC are not approaching stories with spin. Spin is, is actually ethically. That could be essentially the same, the same situation as saying that a city council member's doing something unethical according to ethical.
Maybe spin is too strong for them, what about a slant? Same thing?
That, that is another instance, I guess, of having to answer that question of, what do you mean by slant? Do you mean that it's a reporter bringing a certain ideology to, like, what is, what does a slant to you?
I think using certain trigger words to fit a national narrative is what's been going on. How about that? I feel, the housing authority is a perfect example. Yes, there, there are housing issues, you know, across the nation, but I feel like a lot of the words that are used in, and the terminology used in some of the articles, actually, all of them that I have at my house, are trying to fit a national narrative and buzz up, you know, gin up what our, what our reader, readers see. And there's an absolute obvious perspective about Roswell and the goings-on in Roswell.
I mean, unfortunately, I can't comment on any housing stories, because as we know, I was not a reporter with Appen.
Of course. I was just trying to give you some feedback on what you just said.
I, I can tell you that in terms of language used, I'm not going to say that, I'm not gonna comment, I'm not going to comment on these stories, but we do make sure to use accessible language, and so people understand. As you know, city council, you get really bogged down in governmental angloings and language, people don't necessarily know what that means. So, that is a component of it, if that's something that you're speaking to, but once again, I don't necessarily know what you're speaking to there, because I was not a reporter on those stories, I was not with Appen at the time. But it is, the, the goal of the press and the goal of these papers is very much to report what is being said, what is happening, the information that we have at hand, and that is what is occurring. So, that is, that is the way that our articles shape up, and that is why we want more communication, we want to have as many statements, as much information as possible, because that helps us report it out. We cannot report something out if we don't have it. So, that is, I think, an important thing to make that distinction, so that you guys can understand, and the people watching can understand how these articles come to be. And it is with the interviews that we can get, the comments we can get, the data we can scrub off the internet and from open records requests, that is how these stories come to be. So, that is, that is how, that is how the press works, that is how reporting on the council.
Roswell has, I forget, what's the multiple, open records requests? Honestly, there's, I can't remember, because I'm gonna say the wrong thing. The multiple, the X-factor, I wanna say five or six times, something is out of control. Of all of our sister cities combined, on RRs, it is absolutely astounding.
How, how do you know that?
From our, our city clerk and city...
They know how to compare it.
I did, I did not, so, I didn't ask that question, other than I trusted that information. And so, and I'm speaking to you loosely, like, remember, I said, I don't know exactly, and I remember, they brought up, said, oh yeah, ours, our number of RRs is like five times or six times, all of our sister cities combined. And it makes sense, we get a lot of RRs. And you say, well, that's great, it's, it's good, people are looking for transparency, people are looking for information. Yeah, a lot of times, it's people who are not even real people. It's not somebody using a fake name, fake email, I mean, a fake name, fake, what is it?
An organizational name that is unidentifiable.
Yeah, pursuing information. Happens...
Or impersonating someone.
Yeah, stealing identities, identity bound.
And all this is not...
I'd be biased about that.
It's hilarious.
I know.
It doesn't seem that you've looked into it all in any capacity, because I mean, both our cast of leaders probably...
Absolutely. Yeah, you shouldn't have, right? If we looked into it. So, we've asked, like, why do we get, why are we getting, why does this, why does poor Roswell get dispossessed by open record requests? I think it goes back to kind of a history of a very active community, of a community that's just trustful and explosive process. A trust, a community that's gotten more and more enthralled politically in disagreement. I mean, one of our biggest jobs, I really believe this is the heel of the city. Like, if you support Michael Flaherty, then I don't want you to hate Sarah Beeson. If you support Sarah Beeson, I don't want you to hate Michael Flaherty. Like, that's really what I feel like is more of like, if you disagree, they disagree on policy issues, and there should be honesty policy discussions and policy disagreements, and there should be very, who will stop marginalizing other Roswell residents? That's been going on for about a decade. For about a decade, two groups of people have been marginalizing each other, and I really feel like that's one of our biggest responsibilities is to do that. And it's damn tough, I'm gonna tell you, because people are very invested in hating one another. They're committed to it, they're committed to the hate process, I'm not. And I think this, this body of people is not as well. It's hard, because the stakes are very strong, they're political, who wins and who loses? And that matters, but I'm telling you, it's a reality in the city, and so, it shows up a lot in open records requests. Like, I will share, share with you, some of the people that quote-unquote hate me, it's not our policy, it's because I won, and they won't let me, they want their person in, I don't even know who the person is. It's not our policy. Like, let's have a lot of policy discussion, you may be right, you should win, right? You, you should, you know, there should be this, that's not what's going on, I'll have to say this. And so, you see a lot of the stuff, it's active, open, more fair entry, and that's done through RRs, and to the point, like, there are false people putting in open record requests under a pseudonym, different name, and then publishing it under a blog. It's not even real press. It's treated as real press. Sometimes the press will pick up a story and say, well, treat it as a press story, that's not a press story. It's not a press story, that's an active political community game.
We're at 11:25.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we wanna, do we wanna talk about, maybe in the next, I don't know, I don't wanna shut down any conversation, if you guys have, the gals have any other things, we can do that, but to make an effort to get over to OXFO, like, by, I wanna get in touch with our...
Transportist.
Yeah, I've been touching base that we're still going, but I wanna make sure that we're not holding them up from what they're doing, and meet over there. And you all are welcome to go, Adrian and Delaney, I mean...
Oh, I know, but I definitely appreciate this time.
Of course, of course, thank you for being here.
See, you opened up with a lot much more flavor than it could've possibly imagined, buddy.
Yeah, I definitely, this is happening today.
It's your here vibe, in the front.
Remember the, sorry. Remember the retreat in Opelika, and this is the second day when Peter stood up, other Peter, wherever this Peter is, other Peter stood up and said, this is the flow process, this is where things get done. We, we finally brought, broken down the wall, and now we're starting to get somewhere. So...
Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Well said. Sarah, you got anything else?
No.
Christine?
Got it.
A bagel?
It's the first time you didn't have response.
I'm super close, you can't lose.
Yes.
So, we're gonna park at the gravel around, come around the Grimes Bridgeway, you know, we're still closed down that way, but there's a little gravel area there, getting back, I guess, toward the closed-down part.
Okay.
Is there water something there? There's some kind of water, I know there's the river, but a process, there's some piping and stuff right there, too.